Welcome to the Budget Workshop. Today is August 6, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that council members Hayden and Long requested to be excused, and I will mark them so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Council members Carr?
Here.
Costin?
Here.
Shepard?
Here.
Stanky?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Six present and two excused.
Thank you. Item four is business. Four A is the FY '25 budget discussion. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this presentation over to our Finance Director, Mark Mason.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. So today we're here for the fiscal year 2025 Budget Workshop, number one. We also have one scheduled for next week on Tuesday, and if necessary, the one following, on a Tuesday the following week. Some of the things we're going to go through here today is, you know, the budget development, a little about the budget overview. We're going to talk about the revenue sources for the city, expenditures by department, and then there's going to be, we're going to talk about department staffing, asset management plan, and then each department director will then come up and speak on their individual departments, kind of give you an overview of what they're doing with regard to the fiscal year 2025 budget and beyond. So we began this process in November of last year, and as part of the budget development, we evaluated our asset management program, which is what we started with, and how that interacts and intersects with the strategic plan. We looked at our prior year forecasts for fiscal year 2025, and we looked at any changes to personnel or operating that the city, that the departments had identified that were not identified in the previous year. At the same time, we also looked at revenues, both current and future, to ensure that the, you know, the support was available for not only the current year proposed budget for 2025, but fiscal year 2026 and 2027 as well. So just as a reminder to everybody, we're talking about the city manager's proposed budget here today. I mean, we recognize that the city council made an adjustment to the millage rate two weeks ago at the, in the, when we set the proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2025. That is not included in this proposal, and that's not included in the discussion that we're going to have today. However, as we go through the discussion, the city council will identify, when we talk about the difference between what that proposed millage rate means to the general fund, as well as other revenue sources, we'll then have that discussion about what adjustments we'll end up making. So the all funds proposed budget is $984 million. The general fund proposed budget was $242 million. The proposed budget was built upon the millage rate of 5.3126 mills. That was for general operations, and that was a millage rate decrease from 5.3694, which is the millage rate for fiscal year 2024. The fire service assessment revenue estimates remained at a 70% cost recovery, and the, we saw increases associated with the water and sewer rates, also the stormwater rates, and the solid waste rates. And individually, depending on the district that you owned property in for the lot mowing program, you also saw adjustments associated with the lot mowing program. Again, the proposed budget for the general fund, I mean, for all funds is $984 million, with the majority of the budget being located in the enterprise fund, enterprise funds, both stormwater as well as utilities. City manager again proposed his operating budget based upon a 5.3126 mills. Revenues, ad valorem, we budgeted 96%. This 96% takes into account the majority of the property owners who take advantage of the discounts that are available for prepaying their property taxes early. And so the, and we also pursuant to our financial policies, budget our state shared revenues, franchise fees, public service tax, as well as the five and six cent gas tax, at 95% of our estimates, whatever that growth may be. From a general fund overview standpoint, we look at, we break it down into the individual categories of operating for the, for the general fund. We have personal services, which makes up the bulk of the costs associated with the general fund, operating at $74.8 million and capital outlay at 9.5. We have also transfers out. This is for debt service. We also transfer out funds, the other 30% of the cost of the fire department, as well as paying for certain services with stormwater and utilities. And we also have reserves set aside within the, for the proposed budget, sorry, for the proposed budget, we don't, we are not proposing the use of any reserves yet until we actually get to the end of our discussions during the budget workshops. So the majority of the revenues that come in for the general fund is made up of, in this case, ad valorem taxes. Ad valorem taxes cover approximately 63% of the total revenue sources that are included in the general fund. The next revenue source is local half-cent sales tax at $21 million, and then we have a number of other revenue sources that come in associated with the public service tax for both electric as well as gas, natural gas. And we have internal service charges that come in from the various funds, such as the enterprise funds, as well as special revenue funds that have, that are operating funds that utilize the services provided by the general fund, such as the accounting work, accounts payable, et cetera. We also have some transfers in that come into the general fund from other, from other funds. These transfers in include transfers from impact fees for the police and fire training center reimbursement that we're expecting for the remainder of the fiscal year 2025, as well as the internal service charges represent, you know, full cost as well as general charter school reimbursements. Those are in charges for services. So overall, these are your major revenue sources that, that we've received from the, in the, in the general fund. The majority of those revenue sources, not including the ad valorem taxes, are generally fixed. They don't change very much, you know, depending on the, what's happening in the state, you know, for half-cent sales tax, you might see a larger increase year over year. But if there's not a lot of construction going on and other things, then you might see a smaller increase associated with half-cent sales tax. So with the operating budget at 5.3126 mills, it provided for the general operations of the city, and we express that in terms of $1,000 in value. The rollback rate is at 5.0888. As the city council recall, two weeks ago, we had informed you that the rollback rate was 5.0871. The difference in this, in the calculation of the rollback rate has to do with the amount of the money that's paid into the CRA. And we had a new software system that just came down from the state, and as we kept trying to type in the number associated with that, it would give us one number, and then it would give us another when we tried to save it. And so there was, what we ended up putting out was the 5.0871. However, the actual number, when you take into account how the software now works, it comes out to 5.0888. So the as-of-July-1 certified taxable values at 5.3126, the tax levy would have been 5, 157 million. Our 96% levy would have been at 150.8 million. With the 5.2188 mills, the total tax levy is 554 million, 384, and 96% is 148 million, 209. The difference between these two numbers, approximately 2.6 million. We'll talk a little bit about that later, about the, some of the other changes that have occurred since we issued the proposed budget. As an example, the, we finally received the estimates from the state of Florida for some of these state shared revenues, such as the half-cent sales tax, the municipal revenue sharing, as well as the communication services tax. When taking those into account, it added a little over 1.3 million, approximately $1.3 million. So the, we take that into account, the numbers shift a little bit. We're now looking at something, something less than $2.6 million difference. Overall, the increase that was included in your proposed budget is, was 11.45% increase over fiscal year 2024. At two point, at 5.2188 mills, the overall increase is about 9.6%. Either one of these millage rates, and specifically the 5.2188 mills, will support growth in services as proposed. So again, this chart shows you what it would have been at the taxable value and the 5.3196 millage rate at $15.5 million. The chart will just simply show a little, a smaller adjustment associated with proposed 2000 of fiscal year 2025. And the future year estimates won't change much. We're still looking at a 5% in 2026 and a 6.5% change in 2027. So some of the changes that we saw in the, in, for the general funded and taxable value, when we look at, when we look at the certified values when they come in, in, in July 1st, we generally break these down into two parts. One part is the base value change, and that's the dollar value associated with, this is the, this is what the, the final value was in the prior year, and this is the base value, not utilizing any new growth. And then we have the new growth percentage, and what is that as a percentage associated with the total values? At the same time, when we're looking at these numbers, we're also looking at the, the information that the city manager, you know, worked on and in, associated with, changes associated with growth that we're looking at, and the position adds that are included in the, in the proposed budget, as well as other things. It's not just positions. It might be some operating expenses, capital expenses, that are also included when it comes to, with new positions. And so looking at that, the city manager's proposed budget, or the position, or the portion that's associated with new growth, was 6.07%. So the program modifications we're looking at for this, the overall changes with, which is the base value changes, was 5.14%, and the total program modifications would have been $12 million. So these are the things that we, we look at when we're looking at the total, the total picture associated with the general fund, and that being the largest share of the revenues to support the general fund. So the chart you see before you is a, is basically a discussion about what new growth taxes, value increases in taxes, and millage rates. So the orange bar that you see is the base value changes year over year. We go back to 2006 all the way through 225, to kind of give you an idea of what has happened over the last, basically 20 years. So the orange bars represent base value changes. The blue bars represent new growth, or the new growth value changes. And the gray line that populates through, throughout the trend line is the millage rates. So as you can see, in the beginning of the year, in the beginning, 2006, fiscal year 2006, through fiscal year 2009, we saw some fairly sizable base value changes back then. And during that period of time, we recognized that, you know, there was certain, we had certain things to do around here. We had some improvements to make to the city. We had some other things. We added some additional positions, additional police officers, firefighters. I think we opened at least two new fire stations during that period of time. But at the same time, we had the opportunity to lower the millage rate, and the city council at the time elected to lower the millage rate to reflect the fact that we had base value adjustments. In 2008, when we saw the first decline in the base value adjustment, for us, we didn't know whether it was a permanent issue, or whether it was something that was going to continue. And at that time, the city council elected in both 2008 and 2009 to lower the millage or keep the millage rate the same, until we saw the trend that was going to occur. And, you know, I know this because I was here. So the, so in 2010, as we were developing the budget for 2010, it became quite obvious with the, with the deep spike that we saw in the reduction in overall base value, and the fact that new construction was slowing down to almost a crawl, we ended up having to increase the millage rate to at least maintain services within the organization and to the, to the residents at that time. So fast forward over the intervening years, you know, certainly we saw some base value changes as, as the properties, property values continued to strengthen. We saw new construction start to ramp up, very, you know, specifically in 2019, with an annual increase right up through 2023. 2024 was an anomaly on new construction, and at the same time, during those periods of time, we added additional new, new personnel, because we saw a spike in the number of people that were moving into Cape Coral, and we had service levels to maintain. So during this period of time, in 2024, it was an anomaly. This was immediately after Hurricane Ian. The property appraiser had attached or basically netted the reductions in overall value for damaged homes and damaged properties against the new construction. And so 2024 was an anomaly, and in 2025 is when we've seen the most value growth in the city that I think we've ever seen. However, at the same time, we're also seeing a base value change. We saw a slight dip in 2024. We felt the anomaly at the time was more Hurricane Ian related, but 2025 tells us that now there's probably a little bit more of a trend on the direction we're going on base This particular chart kind of, you know, emphasizes that change. The gray line is the base value changes. The blue lines basically represent the value, overall 100% value in the city, and the small little orange lines, I'm sorry, the columns that are included here represent the new growth associated with the city. So as you can see, the gray line in 2023, 24, and 25, it appears to be dipping back towards what we would consider to be a trend line of growth on base value, probably in the 2.5% to 3% range. Now, it represented 5.4% of the total value today, but next year, depending on what that change is, it could be less than that, or it could be more. This is simply a trend that we're seeing, we're simply seeing. It's the number of properties that are currently on the MLS, the, you know, the, the changes in the, in the sales price from what's being asked and what's actually being sold for. So this would give us a fairly decent idea of what we think we can expect going forward. Now, we certainly, you know, this isn't a gloom and doom thing. That's not what this is about. It's really more of an education opportunity for everybody here to understand that we do look at the future. We do forecast to the future. And this, right now, this type of trend gives us, and based upon what we've seen in the past and have experienced in the past, gives us a broad understanding of that we could probably see something similar in the future, not necessarily as bad as what it has occurred in the past. Because I don't think the economics today warrant that type of, of discussion. But it certainly, it's understanding to us that things are slowing down a little bit here, and we need to be cognizant of that. So overall, the fiscal year proposed budget for general fund expenditures by department at 242 million. Again, we'll have discussions, you know, to reflect the change in the millage rate, as well as the additional revenues that we've seen. And the, the one other item that has not yet been included in the budget is associated with the, the public service tax that is currently being used to support the charter school system. And so we have a number for that, but we don't have an agreement yet with the charter school, so it's not included in this overall budget either. So today, at the 5.3126 mills, this is a structurally balanced budget. Current revenues do support current expenditures, and we expect that once we're done, still current revenues and current, will support current expenditures. For the general fund fund balance, what are we looking at? Well, it's, right now, it's probably a little too early for us to really be able to gauge where we're going to end up at the end of the year. We have a lot of current encumbrances that are still outstanding. We have goods and goods to be received, things like that, before we get to the end of the year. I don't know what the overall encumbrances will be at the end of the year, so we want to make sure that we're, we're fairly comfortable in, in the direction that we expect to be. I think one of the things that is most important to us is that we have recovered the majority of what we spent associated with Hurricane Ian. For those funds that we spent out of the general fund, both the, our reserve balances, in order to support the cleanup within the city, the majority of those funds have been received back. So what that means is, is that we would expect that the budget stabilization reserve would be refunded. Any other reserves that the city council elects to have in place would also be refunded, and the, and then whatever might be left over after that, then we could certainly, you know, have that discussion about what to do with those resources in the future. The fire operations fund is another major fund that we talk, that we want to talk about because it has a, it has a major impact with both the FSA, as well as the, the property taxes within the city. The overall budget is forecasted at, at 95, it'll be at 97 million. We have the proposed budget that we had, had recommended, I think it's at 95 million for the expenditures, will likely be adjusted upwards, as we're seeing additional expenses for the operations for the, for the organization. All the remaining operating funds, from all hazards down through the yacht basin fund, water and sewer fund, again, makes up a large part of that for the, the operations of the system. The, and that comes in at 613,582 for fiscal year 2025. This is another slide that we've added to kind of give you an idea of the, the overall, the full-time equivalent employees that we have here per thousand residents. We went back to 2013 to give, to, to identify the number of employees that we had here per thousand residents and the support of those residents. And over, I would say, the last five years, six years, we've seen a decline in the number of, of employees, full-time equivalent employees, per 1,000 residents. And I, I don't know that that's a bad thing. It's just simply an observation. You know, it could, we're becoming more efficient in what we're doing, but at the same time, the overall residents, the number of people that live here, the population, has grown immensely, just as little as since 2020, at 194,000. Now we're 227. So it takes time, and it takes, you know, resources in order to keep up with that, both in personnel, as well as capital resources to support that many, the, the population we have. In addition, we give you an idea of what our current budget per capita is at 4,324. We don't have a comparison here to show this to you, you know, in comparison to others, but I expect that, you know, if we, when we come back, we'll basically give you an idea of what this means for us versus other cities of similar size. Department staffing requests, overall, we had 66.44 positions requested. Of that, the general fund had 32.14 requested, which is broken down into the chart to the right, with police administration, or police, having 12 million, 12 million, sorry, 12 positions. Administration throughout all of the various departments and administration, and 9.44 positions. The portion of the general fund for fire, which is that 30%, is 2.7 positions. And we have also in the city attorney, six, and city auditor, two. Couple of things to actually point out in here, and the stormwater fund, as we, as we mentioned, when we talked about the stormwater fee assessment, the stormwater fund, this has been built into the programming for the last, and will be built into the programming for the next three years, for the number of positions that we're looking to bring in in support of the services that we're providing with regard to stormwater. Water and sewer, as the system continues to grow, we're going to have, we're going to have additional positions. Water and sewer fund is actually doing a staffing study, so we expect that we'll see some additional changes associated with staffing. Overall, here, we just simply break down what each, each fund, each division is looking for in explanation of what those very specific positions are that they've requested. And for the asset management program, overall, for the 2025 requested budget, it's a $208 million. We have a six-year program, fiscal year 2025 adoptable. Everything else is forecasted, subject to change, depending on cost increases, et cetera. Right now, we're averaging, when you, when you look at this and you see at the, you know, larger dollar values in 2027 in capital improvement, that's going to represent the North Three Assessment. Same thing in 2029, that's going to represent a new assessment area as well. That's why some of those numbers end up spiking in those particular years. And I, we're ready to start with the department overviews, and I believe the first one up is the city attorney.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. So as the slide here indicates, and I've spoken with you all one-on-one, and I'll kind of memorialize that, because I know we did have individual conversations during the one-on-one meetings. So based upon kind of my overview in, in terms of my role in the city, I've, I've really dynamically shifted the roles and responsibilities of the city attorney's office in meeting the legal demands of the city. That is a fundamental shift away from what has been happening here before, in the preceding years, for whatever reason. I, an organization of this size, with the complexity that it has, considering all the prospective contractual agreements, not to mention the growth, it appears that the office may have been underutilized, or not necessarily utilized accordingly, to address all the legal needs. I believe I believe, moving forward, based upon my experience and how I've now reshuffled the city attorney's office, where lawyers will individually represent the departments and do all the legal work, and they're also reducing, hopefully, the intent of outside counsel. While I can't guarantee that all outside counsel will be eliminated, but my goal, at least over the preceding year, has in fact been to reduce the level of outside counsel that has been utilized. In order to accomplish that, at least to get to a, a level, that is why I proposed six additional positions. There are other cities of comparable size that have probably that much, and they have the same amount of legal work as well. So as a result of kind of my fundamental shift away, that is why I have proposed that. I believe that is what is necessary for the growth. An issue that I've currently heard is code enforcement is an important factor. I believe a lawyer needs to be involved with the day-to-day operations of the code enforcement department to ensure that there is compliance. There's also additions of multimillion-dollar contracts that don't seem to be necessarily being handled from a legal perspective as they should. I think that is an essential component as well, to make sure that we have contract compliance. So these are, and then, of course, most importantly, one of the first things the chief, the police chief brought to my attention, I think within my first month, is, is the fact that there is no police legal advisor. A police legal advisor is an essential component to provide our officers with the most recent law, and be able to either train, or provide, or issue legal pull tends on emerging case law and precedent. That is of fundamental importance, and it's a little bit perplexing as to why that has not occurred in the past. But with that said, my proposal is to really bring us on par. It will bring us to a level that I believe the city should have been all this time, and hopefully, it'll also address the progressive growth, not only of the complexity of the work that will happen regarding the projects that will happen in the expansion of the utilities, but also the further development within the CRA, and the entertainment corps, and the downtown corps, which will be essential for ensuring that we regulate and ensure legal compliance with not only the laws, but also the desires of the city council and the city manager. That's my proposal. I know that I spoke with you one-on-one, I'm here to address any questions, but this is what I believe is necessary to meet the legal needs of this city, and to ensure that things do not necessarily go, and by the wayside, when they should not be going by the wayside.
Thank you. Just one quick question, if you would, before we get into discussions. And I know at least two of these positions are, are new positions. One is your senior assistant city attorney that you have outlined.
Yes.
And the other is your city attorney's office manager.
Those are, that's correct. Those are two brand-new FTE positions that, that do not have an existing classification as we sit here today.
And could you give us a brief overview of those two positions, and how you see they will be implemented into your program?
So in terms of the office manager, there's the, the day-in, day-out essential operations of, of the office. It is, it is the mechanism by way of which all the legal bills are satisfied, addressed, making sure that, that, that there is functionality amongst the individual paralegals, the legal assistants, administrative assistants, in order to ensure scheduling and all of the, all of that, that is necessary for the operations of the actual department. That would be the role of the office manager. That would include, you know, addressing, satisfying any, any ordering, anything having to do with the functionality of the law office. The city attorney's office is, is in fact, a law firm. It is a law firm that does exclusive work for this governmental entity, which consists of over, or nearly 200, 2,000 individuals. And that was what its role, in making sure that all the legal needs are ultimately addressed and checks and balances. In terms of the senior assistant city attorney, that is more of a supervisory role. Right now, I do have a deputy city attorney that I am seeking to fill. That has been a difficult endeavor, considering the market as it sits right now. But as I have experienced over my time, there are circumstances where a higher-level attorney is necessary in order to make legal decisions where I am not available, or the deputy city attorney is not available as well. That would be the role of the senior assistant city attorney, also to ensure that there is appropriate supervisory personnel over the lower-line assistant city attorneys. For example, the police legal advisor, and also an assistant city attorney, number one. They would be supervising them, making sure that their legal work is up to par, as I think that they need to be, in order to address the legal needs of the, of the city.
Okay, I'll open up for any discussion.
Councilmember Carr. Thank you. Is the only open position you have now, the deputy position, or you have other assistant city attorney positions?
The only one that I have is just a deputy, which is currently advertised.
And the staffing level now, how many assistant city attorneys do you have?
Attorneys?
Assistant, yeah.
Yeah, hold on, I wasn't expecting that. One, two, three. I believe it's four or five.
I apologize.
Okay. I know my full FTE is 12.
Okay. But specifically, the attorney positions, you think, is five?
The attorney, including myself, it should be six.
Okay.
Plus me, six.
And it sounds like your goal is to have one effectively for each department in the city?
So I've reorganized the office, where each lawyer, well, each lawyer is assigned multiple departments because of how many departments we have and how many lawyers I have. Some departments are more intensive in their legal work, some of which I still have to really readdress and kind of cultivate the process of working with the city attorney's office to address the legal needs. So to answer your question, yes, as, as we sit here today, each department is assigned a lawyer to handle all the legal needs.
Okay. You know, after our discussion, I think you made it clear to me the needs that exist, and I, you know, I do, I am familiar with the prior, you know, operation of our city attorney's office, and the differences that I see personally with your leadership and different approach. So I think you're heading in the right direction, and I will support your request as we move forward. Thank you.
And I recognize, I'm not telling you this right now, I recognize that it's, it's a lot, and I, and I certainly understand where we are with the budget. And Mike and I work exceptionally well in terms of making that accomplishment, because we are in fact, a team, we're a team that ultimately implements the direction of the city council. So while I, I've asked for six, I think I'm, I'm very, very mindful of the fact that six may not be attainable, and I'm fully prepared to accept that and understand that, you know, as a, as a charter officer, I have a role and responsibility to work with Mike, and to address the legal needs, but also to make sure that we work as a team together to meet the, what the council is trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. So the, the five plus yourself, now the six, obviously, what you're requesting here, they aren't all attorneys.
Correct.
And so, assuming the addition of the actual attorneys, could you give us just a, kind of just a quick rundown of the hierarchy, if you will? Because that might, with the fact that there's five plus you, six, and we have a division of the departments right now that they will represent and protect, by adding these, and even, even without the addition of these, part of it's the pecking order, where if you're not here, then the deputy attorney is in charge, has, has authority at that point. And so, to some degree, I guess, these positions kind of have, okay, so if this person isn't here, then this person is, is in charge. Could you give us an idea of, of the hierarchy of the, of those that are actually attorneys in your office?
So in terms of any real legal authority for making any decisions, it'll be myself as the final decision-maker. In the event that I am unavailable, it'll be the deputy city attorney that will be responsible, barring there being an exceptional set of circumstances. With that, the next, in terms of hierarchy, will be the, the senior assistant city attorney will be the third. Everyone else, which are your ones, twos, and your threes, are necessarily, are not going to be able to make any final decision on behalf of the governmental entity, unless, of course, they confer with myself, or the deputy, or the senior. And that will depend on really the gravity and the implications of making a final legal decision. As it stands right now, I pretty much make all of them for everything, no matter how inconsequential it may be. And part of that is I'm looking to delegate some of that responsibility, because some of it should be in fact delegated to others, other ones with the appropriate skills and knowledge. But in order to accomplish that, I need to have the right fit with the right person that I believe mirrors my approach to legal guidance and, and handling of legal matters. And so that's kind of, that's, that's really the more, the delicate approach that I'm dealing with, and I'm struggling with right now.
Okay. And lastly, the, the addition of, of this legal team, if you will, some of the investment required to have that team is going to be recaptured by not having to use as much outside, outside counsel. So there'll be, if you will, a reduction in expense in, in some areas, to help pay for the addition of, of our own internal legal team.
You're correct. And I'm going to give you a real world, what has happened, and what I have done in the preceding year that I've been here, or nearly a year. In terms of the development agreement, that was traditionally farmed out to outside counsel. I have now brought that in-house, and that has been handled in-house by, by myself and another lawyer. Another example is also the public-private partnership, which was scheduled for tomorrow. That was also, would have traditionally have gone out to outside counsel. I have brought that in-house. I have worked on the concessionaire agreement, which you all are aware of, and now I will be focusing my attention to finalizing the comprehensive agreement for presentation before you all. So to, to provide that, those are the real-world examples that I intend on bringing in. Another prime example is that, that the litigation that was handled by outside counsel regarding our waste hauler should not have been with outside counsel, it should have been handled inside. But because of the limitation of the staffing, it was just not a feasible thing, I believe, as, as to why that occurred.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks. I guess I'll jump in here, since there's no other lights on. You know, for me, basically, if you look at the budget, it's about a 39% increase in expenditures for your department compared to FY '24, almost a 50%, not quite, but almost a 50% increase. If you have 13 individuals now, you're asking for six, you know, that's a 40-some percent increase, just in personnel, in one year. For me, personally, I think that I would like to see this more of a two-year step, where we do three this year, and possibly three next year. One particular position that I'm really struggling with is our senior assistant city attorney. You know, before you were hired onto the city, this council approved a deputy city attorney. And I think that's an extremely important position. And I, personally, I think that that's one of, probably one of only a few downfalls that I can say on your part, is that position hasn't been filled. Because God forbid, if something should happen to you, and I think I've asked you this question, who's, who's going to take over in the, in the interim? You know, whether it's as a result of sickness, or whatever the case may be. I think that's very important. We try to build an organization that, to have a, something in place. That's why we have directors with deputies, that's why we have an assistant city manager. So they are very important roles, in my opinion. So for us to, to implement a whole new position of a senior assistant city attorney, which sounds to me, does very similar to what a deputy city attorney would do, I think we need to focus solely on filling that position first. Once that's, position's filled, if you feel a need thereafter for the senior assistant city attorney, in next year's budget, I wouldn't have a problem with that. So that one position I'm struggling with, only because we've, we've went without a deputy city attorney since January. And again, I think, if you look at this, I can see the need for the police legal advisor. I think that's, as you had mentioned, very critical for the police department. I can see the need for another assistant city attorney, too, to help with possibly not outsourcing our legal need into the public. I think we could do it more in-house. And then, as your department grows, I can see the need in the office manager. So for me, the three positions that I am comfortable in supporting would probably be the assistant city attorney, too, the city attorney for the police department, and the office manager. So they would be the three positions that I could support in this year's budget, and then revisit those other positions in next year's budget. So that's what I would feel comfortable moving forward. I'm not saying you don't need all six individuals, but I think a two-year step like this gives you the opportunity to fill that deputy city attorney's position, see if that need for that senior assistant city attorney is still there. If it is, then we have this discussion next year. So that's where I'm at, with the positions. In light of, you know, I know we have, all your positions are paid out of the general fund. I know we've reduced the millage rate from the proposed millage rate that our city manager had submitted. I know we have a little over $3 million that we need to come up with. So this is just one area that I think that we could accomplish a little bit of a savings, but still have that two-year plan.
And if I may, and just so that the council's aware, and publicly, so I can, I have extended an offer to someone for the deputy city attorney position several months ago. Unfortunately, it was just not enough to bring them here. So the market is, the market is tough. And, and as I've said to you, and I'll say it to you right now, I have a certain expectation of whoever I bring as the number two, because I expect them that they're going to accomplish what I have accomplished, to, to meet the needs of the council, and to work with the city manager. And it's a very delicate, delicate little balancing act that I have to do. So, so I want you all to know that, that, that is a very important position, that, that I'm very, very mindful. And I recognize what you're saying, Mayor, and I don't disagree with you, but, but I'm also very, very cautious as to who I bring in as the number two for you.
Yeah, with that being said, I think that, you know, when we had this discussion probably 15 months ago, on the deputy city attorney's position, I think we relied heavily on our HR department, because that was a position that we did not have. So we had to implement that, that job classification, and put that pay structure in, in place. So I think all of us here want you to be successful. We want to give you all the tools and the resources and the personnel, so we are successful. With that being said, if you take a look at the salary that we had put on that particular job classification, if you don't think that you can get the qualified applicant that you're looking for, then I'll, please, come back to council and express that interest that, hey, I just can't get it done. This is what the expectation is, here's what the job classification, where the salaries were set, this is inadequate, if that's the case. I would much rather hear that.
Understood.
Then, so we can give you what you need, so you can find the individual as our number two. I think that's very important. Again, our deputy, our directors have number twos, our city manager has, has number twos, and this is a, a position I feel is essential, that we, we have to fill, so you have to enlighten us, if you can't get it done, on what's been established thus far.
Understood. It's, and it's critical for me as well, too.
Can you repeat the three that you support?
The three I would support would be the assistant city attorney, too, and the police legal advisor, the assistant city attorney. So that's two attorneys. And when I had asked the city attorney, I said, if there was three that you were looking for, his other choice was the office manager.
Well, it was, it was the office.
But I think he mentioned the senior.
Yeah, so it was the assistant city attorney, the police legal advisor is critical, the senior assistant city attorney, and then the office manager.
Yeah, that, that was his choices. Again, my personal feelings, since we don't have the deputy, I think we need to focus on that first, and then come back for the senior. So that's why my three priorities was the office manager that he had mentioned. So that's why my three priorities was the office manager that he had mentioned, the assistant city attorney for the police department, and then I added the city attorney two. So city attorney two, the attorney for the police legal, and the office manager were my three that I could support. And then try to get the deputies' position filled and then revisit this next year in our next year's budget. Councilmember Webb?
Yeah, I need to ask the question that I was going to ask. I was asking, asked the city attorney if he had to choose three, which it was. I didn't know you'd already asked him that question. And I was going to ask how many paralegals we had, but if he hasn't, if he didn't add that to his list of the top three, then I can support the three that you mentioned. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I don't think we heard from councilmember, go ahead, councilmember Shepard.
I want to hear what your three are.
So my three were the, the office man, and I told this to the mayor. My three were the office manager, the police legal advisor, and the senior assistant city attorney. Yes. 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 Yeah, so it'd be the office manager, the police legal advisor, and the senior assistant city attorney.
I'm going to support the tools that you're asking for because you run that office and I feel that you're going to make the best judgment call.
I'm going to go to councilmember Cosson first, and I'll come to you, councilmember Carr, since she hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wrote down four positions before when you were speaking. I wrote down also office manager. Isn't that an important one, too?
Yes, I did.
Yes, office manager.
Okay. And can you talk again about why that one is so important?
So the office manager runs the day-to-day, day-to-day operations of the law office, essentially. And the reason why it's now ultimately different is because I do the one-on-ones with you all. So I no longer am in the office as my predecessor was. So because I am now dealing more with your one-on-one issues as they emerge along with the city manager, it requires someone to actually make sure that the office is properly running and making sure that all the checks and balances are done. I can't be everywhere at the one time. And so this individual would ensure that the operation of the office would continue to flow, even though I may not be there on Mondays and Tuesdays, and I'm totally jammed up on Wednesdays.
So this position is a direct result of our change of process, where we have you meet with us?
Well, it is, it is really my change of process, what I believe that you all needed in the sense of moving forward. Where I have been before, there has always been an office manager that ran the operations, dealt with, you know, the support staff that are in the office, dealt with billing, dealt with paying bills, dealt with ensuring that the attorneys, their licenses are paid and satisfied in terms of reserving for any CLE, making sure they're all CLEs met. That is the role of the office manager, to ensure that all of that operates. How it was done before, I couldn't really tell you. Do I think that how it was done before was right? Absolutely it was not right. So this is my way of reshifting and elevating this office to the level that I believe this city deserves.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it makes sense to me to include that. So I would, I would support the four, the three that were previously mentioned and that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
Just, just one question in time of clarification. I know the, you've already expressed the difficulty in the recruitment of your deputy. And from what I understood, based on your explanation, that the senior assistant attorney would also have some level of ability to make decisions for the city as final decisions, so to speak.
Final in the sense of certain legal, legal matters, yes.
Do you think you'd have the same difficulty recruiting or, you know, finding that person?
No, because I already have someone in mind.
That was the perfect answer. I didn't want to ask you that straight out. The fact that you offered that, I appreciate. I think that, that helps me. I mean, I would certainly support that position because of that. I think having the ability to delegate, I know how busy, we all know how busy you are. We all, we also understand the level of involvement you have in virtually every single decision in that office. For that reason, and the fact that he has a subordinate, that he would entrust that ability to, I think, would sway me at least, that I would support that position over the, any other attorney position that you're asking for. Just to give you the opportunity to delegate some of that responsibility and to, you know, have that secession plan starting to move forward in a very quick way, based on the comment you just made. So thank you for that. I did, I did not want to ask that publicly.
That's okay.
In case there wasn't.
I was waiting for it.
Yeah, perfect. Well, thank you very much. So that, that would be anything I would say, Mayor, is reconsider that comment as part of the decision-making about the positions. I think that, for me, that puts that position at a higher level of importance. Thank you.
Yeah, that was going to be, to back on top of that question. Do you see a progression from senior assistant city attorney moving into that deputy position? Because I know we've had trouble finding that. Is that something that they could then move up within a year of training or learning more from you?
I'm very, I'm very mindful of who's there, how long they've been there. And so what I'm trying to establish is the right attorneys that will be able to succeed myself and whoever else in the future years to come if I am not here. In order for me to accomplish that, I've got to, I've got to move the chess pieces accordingly.
Okay. So knowing that you've got someone for that senior position, and there is a possibility that if we go so long without finding a deputy, that they can fill that role, or you feel confident that they could step in and do some of those duties, then I could support the senior over the assistant city attorney two. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. In your experience, have there ever been circumstances where the person that performs the function of the office manager is also a paralegal?
They're usually, they're usually backup. And what I mean by that is, in the event that there is circumstances where someone is out, for example, I have, I have a couple of individuals that are out for various reasons. They would serve as the backup. And so that individual would do some of the paralegal work as well. Or they would be the one that'd be drafting certain pleadings and documents, or drafting the resolutions when we've got so much going on that I need another person. So to answer your question, yes, they're backup.
So that, so since, you know, the drawing board is still available, obviously, through these workshops that we have coming. So that was just from a selection process. I would think that if in fact we do move this from six to three in the selection of an office manager with the thought that you also wanted a paralegal, maybe be looking at someone that could serve both roles if necessary. So instead of just an office manager that was administrative, also select someone that also had the qualifications to act in paralegal capacity.
And you think very well like I do, and there is, that would be my exact intent, because in the event that there was a need, and it happens, and it's happening right now, the person would essentially serve as a backup in order to address that.
Okay, thanks. And then similarly, as it relates to the, to the senior assistant city attorney and the deputy attorney that we are, that we're looking for, with the fact that you've been operating without one for seven months, to get two infused, that would be kind of manna from heaven at this point. But potentially with either, either the hiring of the deputy or, you know, based on where this all goes, that qualification level for a senior assistant city attorney might, maybe you would get a deputy that would, that would be able to serve both capacities. I don't know. But if paring down from six to three, if there's a couple that could do double duty based on selection criteria, maybe that could be there. And the last question is, are any of these positions, would you consider any of these positions promotable from within that we would backfill to fill these positions and backfill someone that we, a vacancy that would be there, that we might even be hiring someone for more of an intro position and giving someone an opportunity that we already have to promote?
It's possible, but I would have to, as I said, I'd have to see all the, all the pieces on that chessboard in order for me to see, to ensure that what, what I'm looking to accomplish continues on and so that there isn't a falling back, because that's, I think that's an important component to me. But to answer your question, maybe. You know, I've got, I've got, one, two, three. I've got three brand-new lawyers that's been, that have been with the office, one who just graduated, one who is relatively new to government, that's only been here for a little bit over a year. So I don't have that institutional knowledge, but for maybe two attorneys. And so there's, that is something that I'm very, very mindful as well. Those, those people that were here are adjusting to my way of legal representation of the, of the city. And they're receptive to it, and they understand the importance of it, because I give them that support. But to answer your question, because my office is so relatively new with lawyers, it would be difficult for me to shift them to something else.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess I'll interject again. Since you had mentioned and answered the question that councilmember Carr had asked that you already have an individual in mind for the senior position. You know, I realize how the market is today. It's, it's difficult to fill normal positions. And I wouldn't call an attorney's position normal. So I'm sure that there's a lot more complexities and a lot more things that come along with that position, that it's probably a more narrow field of candidates that you have to work with. So with that being said, and I know we've had this discussion two or three times, but you never mentioned that. I wish you would have. But with that being, that information coming, I guess about having someone in mind.
I didn't want to, I wanted to keep it as neutral as possible.
Okay. But with that being said, you know, I, I understand if you have, I think that position is possibly a need, like you've identified. I would have preferred to see the deputies' position filled first. But since you already have that individual in mind, and when another councilmember asked you, hey, could that individual be your deputy? I think your answer was no. So that tells me that you're looking for something more in qualifications for the deputy than you are with the senior.
It's just taking a dynamic approach and understanding all the individuals within my department and where I think that it all needs to go.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll support the, the office manager, the senior assistant city attorney, and the assistant city attorney for the police department, the police legal advisor. Those three positions, I could support those in light of the information that came out during this meeting. And then revisit this next year for the other three positions. That's where I'm at. So I guess we'll go down the line. I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak. Is everybody okay with those three positions? Actually, it's the three that, that he outlined, that he's looking for. We'll go down the line. I know councilmember Cosson was the only councilmember that mentioned four individuals, but I didn't hear anyone else entertain a fourth position.
I'm okay with the three that you just said.
I'm okay with those three. I'm okay with those three.
I'm good.
Yep.
Good with those.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the support.
All right. Next item, I think, is it the city auditors department?
Yes, sir. City auditor. No worries. I heard you walking out.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Andrea Russell, city auditor. So here to go through the details of the two additional internal auditor positions. It's an entry-level position that we're requesting this year, and the associated costs that go along with them. And I'd like to focus on the department highlights and some accomplishments that we've made. There's some actual additions to the slide that came up after it was completed. But one of them is one of our new internal auditors who was hired just before Hurricane Ian, so it was a little bit of baptism by fire, and he stayed. He has achieved his certified internal auditor designation. And the other one that started with him has also substantially completed testing to obtain, so he's passed two of the three parts. And this is great for our office. It actually helps to add to our knowledge base and ensure compliance with our Yellow Book standards that we perform our audits according to. And we also completed a peer review of our office, which is an independent body coming in and taking a look at how we do our audits. And we get a clean peer review. We actually broke the system in the fact that they wanted to put in our report all of the good things that we did, and we're really impressed with the number of audits that we issued. As you can see on the slide, we completed 13 audits during fiscal 2023. And they actually sent an extra team member because of the number of audits that we've done, so the peer review was for a three-year period. So we broke the system with that. We also broke the system with, they wanted to see how great we did and how proud they were of our policies and procedures. And couldn't exactly figure out a way to get that in the report, and the powers that be wouldn't let them put it in the report. But really, they mentioned the good stuff when they have bad stuff to report, and we didn't have any bad stuff. So they actually issued a separate email correspondence to say what a good job we had done. But this was with the current staff that we had done, that we accomplished all of this. And basically, the increase in our budget is due to the additional costs associated with, you know, training and travel that the new members would have to get. We are required by our standards that we audit to, the Yellow Book standards, to get 40 continuing education credits per year, per person. So that's the, the large increase, not necessarily personnel increase, but the training that we need to get to continue to offer the audits at the level that we do. So I threw in a couple of extra slides, just to kind of document, so that you could see on paper where we were at, the current staffing. With five auditors, including myself, 75% of time available for work. The other 25% is meetings, administration, training, and time off. We completed, we had 7,800 hours available for audit, and we completed the 13 audits for the time period with an average of 600 hours per audit. So I just kept everything the same, adding two more staff members. These are, again, entry-level auditors, internal auditors, the entry-level position in our office. And just projected out that we would have 10,920 available hours, which could possibly result in five additional audits, so 18 audits if we kept them all at 600 hours. We also have a couple of new, well, a new department possibly coming into existence. And there is some additional help that we're offering the external auditors. So that's time away from audits to assist the external auditors. So it actually would be a big help to my people to get a little bit extra help. The next slide is just more data from fiscal '20. You can see we, we had, now there's other information that's not up here. Fiscal '20, it looks like we only did four audits. We did have four auditors. But we had seven other projects that we, actually, the office completed, that I don't count as audits. So they're not audits, not audit services, special investigations that we have to do, audit hotline calls. We had, it was seven projects, which were four projects and three hotline calls. And sometimes audits spawn off of hotline calls. If we identify an issue with the department or division that we think warrants an audit, we'll add that to the audit plan. In fiscal '21, that total included the four carryover audits from the prior year, and it does not include three projects and four hotline calls that we had in '21. '22 was, was a busy year as well, and you can see our staffing, we went from four auditors to three auditors. Three auditors, we were at three auditors for quite some time. It was myself, my deputy, and one other internal auditor. We still get the work done. But you can see fiscal '23, when we were fully staffed, we had no special projects and only three hotline calls. But we assisted the city after Hurricane Ian with Form 214 reviews. That was about three to four months after Hurricane Ian that we, we were working not on any audits. So just important information that isn't up there. up there. And then because everybody likes pictures, you can see that hopefully with two additional auditors, we could complete 18 audits in one year. And it's, I did not include fiscal 24 because we're in the midst of it and we're working on wrapping up some audits. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for any discussion on the two positions. I guess it's important, I believe your department, looking at the budget book, you have six individuals, including yourself?
Mm-hmm. And one admin.
I'm sorry?
One admin.
One admin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So a total of seven? Or a total of six?
Six.
Six? And that's including yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
So the numbers up there are just strictly auditors, not the admin, because she doesn't assist on audits.
Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi there. Just want to say I'm a huge supporter of your office. I think you do great work. I've been a participant in the process myself, so I can appreciate the amount of work it takes to, to do the audits and the, the assessment of what needs to be audited. You and I have spoken a little bit about your request already, and I asked you, you know, based on the plan you submitted for fiscal year 25, would you be able to accomplish your goal of what's been presented? And you told me yes, with the current staffing. So, you know, and I, not to belittle these requests at all, but it sounds almost, you know, you're, you're looking to enhance, not necessarily maintain, a, a service level that we're already receiving. And for that reason alone is the reason I would prefer not to support the request, only because I think that, I think you do a, a great job with what you have. I don't know that we have a need, based on the risk assessment report that you provided for 25, to accomplish 18. So that's just a personal opinion, and I think if we're trying to find ways to, you know, we've reduced the millage already and trying to find ways to cut some corners, based on it, everything that I do know from you and your, your documentation, I think it's a good place, so to speak, to, to not add additional staffing at this time. Not to say in the future it might not be appropriate and, and supported, but at this time, I would not like to support the two positions.
The only reason why the current audit plan was based on current staffing is because it has taken us a long time to hire. So I didn't want to promise and then have five additional, even three additional audits that we couldn't get to. And it was a tough job to narrow down the audits from the risk assessment to just, to fit into the 7,800 hours. And I even, if you look at it, not everything is it, it, the slide has that it's average hours. Some audits are 400, some audits are 750. So on average, we were looking at 600 with the additional staff. And the other thing is too, is we work, I, I work my people a lot. We roll right from one audit to the next, the next. And sometimes when you throw in, thankfully, everyone's really excited, hey, I got a special project I have to work on, so your audit's been put on hold. They're like, yes. You know, people don't mind that, but understood. And, and I didn't want to, based on when I did the risk assessment versus when the budget would be approved, versus when we'd be actually able to hire someone. I was looking forward to adjusting the further-out audits, 26 and 27, the audit plan, to, to add some more audits in. And we possibly may have some, assist the city with some compliance, not necessarily audits. We found out recently, after the slides were done, that there, there will be an audit requirement for CDBGDR, but when I was speaking with Mark, we could still assist the city with compiling stuff and, and taking a look at it.
Thank you for that. And I, I apologize. It's almost like you're a victim of your own success, in my eyes. You know, for, that's the reason of lack of support for the increase at this time. You also, you know, in 23 at least, you had 100% completion of, of the, you know, of the audits, of the audit plan, which is first time in a while. But your goal is 75%. So you've got some wiggle room here, you know, to still be successful based on what you propose. So, and again, it's not about lack of support of your office, it's just at the time, we're trying to find cuts, and I think this may be a good place for now. So thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Just for perspective, if, if you could, when I look at 21 to 22, 22 to 23, 23 to projected, we have some relatively good percentage increases in the number of audits. What, what is, what do you feel is the, is the, is the cause for the increase in numbers of audits that would, you know, take us basically 20% increase, 44% increase, now a 38% increase? Is it simply the growth of the city and the number of projects that are, that are engaged in and need to be audited? Why the continued increase in numbers of audits needed?
So with the completion of the audits, and in the earlier years, when we hired the, it was just the three of us, myself, my deputy, and one internal auditor, who's now a senior auditor, there was a learning curve. She had no experience at all in auditing. So we took a chance, and we were able to train her, and then once we had, and it was just the three of us, you notice there was, again, another increase. Part of the, the audit plan and part of what my office does is, and we say it's a plan, and sometimes things bubble up. If there is an investigation, we had an issue a few years ago with the IRS and forms not being filed, payroll forms not being filed. And so that was an investigation, that's not an audit. We continue to increase. This year, we added UEP audit, which is a new department, CIP, or OIC, Office of Capital, OCI, Office of Capital Improvements. We just actually issued that yesterday. But there's always a need, and that risk assessment is just a guide. I technically could audit every single one on there, but that is a guide for us to prioritize. I would like to do some happy light audits, where, it sounds silly, but you know, we just need a little bit of help on some projects, and that might be like a shorter 400-hour audit. But for now, with the staff that I have and the risk assessment and the continued growth of the city, who knows how many more departments we're going to add and divisions, because it's not necessarily a department, but if we keep breaking out divisions and reorganizing underneath, there's different areas for us to look at. Another area, and it's actually on the audit plan, one of the audit plans upcoming, and I think it's fiscal 26, is I'd like to look at, because we are having outside entities run the golf course, run sunsplash. I'm going to be looking at those, that process, and, and how are we making out? How are we making out in the deal, as far as what does the city benefits? Are there ways that we can improve it, so as we continue to farm stuff out and grow as a city? That's additional items that I could actually audit.
So for giggles, then, let, let's just assume that, that instead of being able to add two, you can add one. Does that then mean that, that we could only do 16 audits, and so then you'll have to figure out which two you wouldn't do?
Yeah. I do that all the time. And now, and especially, you know, me, if you throw in the hurricane, I'm still kind of shifting and moving stuff around. If you look back at old audit plans, there are things that had been pushed that we just couldn't do because, you know, FEMA was in, and we can't, we don't want to bother this department. But yeah, I'll, I'll have to sit there and figure out what are we not going to do?
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. So, did you say, I think I heard you say in the beginning, that both of the positions are entry-level?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. I think this is important. I don't think this is one to cut. I know we have things we need to cut. I don't think this should be one of them. I think auditing is kind of like sidewalks, and I know, you guys know that I love sidewalks. We could, we could put more resources into it and then get more, right? So we could put more resources into the auditor's office and get more audits back. I think just because they've done all the ones they said they were going to do, doesn't mean that there aren't more to do. So audits are important because they save money and they increase productivity and reduce liability. So I think it's important that we fund this increase. This, this department hasn't been well-staffed since I've been here with the city for nine years, and so I'd really like to see this happen. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this topic? Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I agree.
With the, with the council member that just spoke. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I don't see any reason to, to not do the full two requests. I support the way it's proposed. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm a, a little different coming into the meeting here, kind of, kind of like the same approach I did with the city attorney's office. In light of, of reducing the millage rate, I was going to recommend that we support one of the individuals. First off, like one of my other council members stated, I think your office does a great job. I think, you know, it's all about manpower. The more manpower you have, the more positions that you have in your organization or your department, you can do more. That's, that's a simple fact. So if we give you more individuals, more auditors, then you're going to be able to do more audits. I think you've done exceptionally well over the years that I've been here. You've utilized and maximized your personnel and got, got the job done. So thank you for that. But I, I think for me, where I'm at in this is, we would support one individual this year and add another individual in next year's budget. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. Thank you.
And I, one thing that I didn't mention is, when we do audits, it's one person. So the addition of another, it, it really helps out. And I have a, a big audit coming up that I'm going to be the, the lead on, and I'm grabbing two of my people. So then there's an, two audits that technically won't get done. So with a, with another person, it'll definitely help. And I'm trying to figure out how to get the last three audits that we have on the, the plan done this year, or at least started before the end of the fiscal year, because I'm not going to be able to finish them in, in a month and a half. But that's one of the things that I completely didn't mention, that it's, it's one, one staff member. So it's a lot for, you know, for review and to make sure we don't miss anything. So any, any additional help we can get is appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah. And, and what makes me comfortable with the two is that we are adding another division with breaking out the, you know, the capital improvements. And then now with the, it's not like a new EOC, but it, it's kind of like that, because we're going to be managing a whole nother, you know, the hurricane recovery money and stuff like that. So that's why I didn't think the two was a big stretch coming in and knowing that there's a, a training curve. So where I appreciate trying to cut the budget and going, one, I'm still going to support the two. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, the larger the sampling size, the, the, the better the average and the more predictable it is. And so as time's gone on and the average audits per year has gone up, using your chart to give us kind of an idea of what it takes to get audits done and whatnot. Is there any kind of, I don't know, industry average or municipality average that says, hey, this is, you know, is 600 hours per audit good? Is it, is it, is it average? Is it above average? What, what, where is it?
It's very difficult on the individual audit level and hour level. So that's why we have that metric of 75% utilization. It's, in, in, I translated that 75% to the plan. So if we get 75% of the plan, good, we're meeting standards. But it's more so on, on the audit hours versus non-audit hours, because you never know when you start looking at stuff. It's not necess, I mean, with the external auditors, and when I used to work for the state of Rhode Island, and we did the state's audit, you knew every year, and you knew the volume of transactions, you had to do 150 for that, in that sample for that test. And you kind of got an idea of exactly how long it would take you. But with the, and that was more of the financial compliance audit, but with performance audits, it's more on the process. Actually, a lot less number-wise, but it's more on the process. And once you really get into and understand the process, that's what guides you on how much. So I take a chance when I, I say 600 hour, well, 600's the average, based on what, what actually happened. But I take a chance when I do that audit program, the audit plan, and I'm looking, I'm like, okay. And I, I generally say, if it's citywide, so we're looking at all the departments potentially, that's going to be a higher number, like 750, 800 hours. If I'm just going to do something that's a targeted, just a division, and it's one process in the division, that might be like 400 hours. So there's no industry standard to say hour-wise, it's more the utilization of the staff, whether administration training versus actual audit time, which goes into that calculation of the, we use the 2080 for the year available hours. And then, say, 75% of it is going to be, 70%, sorry, 70% is going to be devoted to actual audit work. So doing the planning, doing the testing, the reporting. And, and then, don't forget, we have to follow up on the audit. So if we have recommendations, we, you know, they're due September 30th, we go in on the first and say, okay, you said you were going to do this. And we actually test that the departments are, have implemented the recommendations. So there's, there's a lot more to just the general going and doing the testing or sample size.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. With, with that being said, and listening to my fellow councilmembers, I would say this is an area where we, where we shouldn't short-change the need. I, I think, you know, we have a lot going on. Staff can't watch everything. And when you live there, you don't see the defects, you know. A, a new person walking into the house sees something that the homeowner has just taken as normal, you know. And the same, and same thing be true, we got eight of us that are responsible for all of this. To have, to have some oversight and some, you know, neutral ground observation, reporting, and, you know, shortcomings identified and action steps recommended, I, I think, based on where our city has come in very short order and, and looks like it's going to progress in the next few years, I can support the two. We'll find another place to save some money.
Okay. It sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard two from Councilmember Cosden, two from Councilmember Steinkie, two from Councilmember Shepherd, one for me, two from Councilmember Welsh, and zero for Councilmember Carr. So I think the majority has spoken.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in our office, there's a couple of things happening that we are planning for tomorrow, Wednesday. You are looking at, basically looking at adding a new division department in the city. With that, one of the things that we're planning for in, in this budget is to move back the CIP office back into Public Works. So when you're looking at this proposal, you'll see that the adopted budget was 14-1 in FY24, but the adopted budget in FY25 is 11. That is displaying the change of moving CIP back into Public Works. But overall, as we look at it, I do intend on trying to have another direct report. So this is kind of consolidating, but at the same time, in this year, I'm looking at kind of keeping that same direct report, but just having a greater focus in a different area. So this proposed budget reflected moving CIP back into Public Works. And then as far as the overall of the, the city, the only need that I saw really that, that needs to be centralized, that of our office and the city manager's office, is a web specialist. All the other needs should be coming up through the, the department heads, but we run a decentralized administration for our website. And so Public Works has access to, you know, their portion of the website, police has access to their portion of the website, fire theirs, and all the way down the line. Right now, we don't have any centralized position overseeing kind of the architecture out there, when things should be changed, you know, what, looking for scrubbing old data and pulling it down, you know, getting with departments on information that may be outdated. And so as we continue to increase communications in the city and looking for better ways to communicate, I really felt like in our communications area, that having someone dedicated to overseeing the, the entirety of the website would help centralize and coordinate that. And so that's the only need that I saw from the city manager's office. Thank you. And the decrease in the budget is from a reflection of moving CIP back into Public Works.
Okay. I guess I'll open up any discussion, I guess, on that one position that the city manager outlined in, in his comments for the that the city manager outlined in his comments for the web specialist. Open it up, Councilmember Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I support this request mainly because I know there have been, you know, missing pieces. And no one's fault, I think just everybody having, like you said, decentralized access and not any inconsistency. I think this is really important to our effort to be more transparent and make sure the citizens have all the information available to them at all times and that's accurate, up to date. So I fully support this request.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I totally support. I think it will benefit the city and the citizens immensely, so I'm for this position.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment on that position? Everybody else okay with it? Okay. Let you continue on.
You want to do city council one?
Mayor, as far as the city council is concerned, you know, overall, there's a, you know, a slight increase year over year. The primary reason is, well, personal services. So there's no staffing requests and the overall, the city council budget is set accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on that? All right, move on to the next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Kimberly Brun, City Clerk. My department budget is located on pages 83 through 88 in the city manager's proposed budget book. As you can see on the slide here, I have a 27% increase in the department budget. That is, the majority of that is a result of the business tax receipt division transition to the clerk's office from Development Services. We took over that division in April and are busy analyzing the existing program to develop additional methods to efficiently identify, bill, and track new and renewal required business tax receipts. Not sure why that's not advancing. Well, I can also tell you that we, at this time, we have zero staff needs being requested. Our current staffing consists of 18.4 FTEs. That equates to persons in seats, 16 full-time employees, and four contract. For assets costing over $5,000, we have not allocated any funds specific to asset management. Our pieces are based on life expectancy. In the next few years, you'll see replacement of large format printers, scanners, and records, and mail van. But that's in the future. For passport program, as anticipated, our passport revenues have exceeded over $200,000 for both fiscal year '23 and now '24. We're very excited about that. While I'm hopeful that we'll continue to grow this program, recent and future retirements of our key passport agents, projections for 2025 lessened. We're hoping for roughly 177.5 for revenue. So we continue to review those staffing needs now that we're consistently showing growth based on years not affected by the COVID measures we took. If you recall, we had temporarily shut down services in '21, fiscal year '21, and as a result of the U.S. Department of State stopping their program as well. And then we returned appointment only in fiscal year '22. So right now, I have staff cross-trained to assist with the shortages for staffing. So we'll see, so far, so good. We'll see if that continues. So for goals for fiscal year 2025, we're looking forward to providing another year of professional and consistent customer service. And a big thing we have coming up is we're looking to transition to a new software, agenda software program. So looking forward to great things ahead. Any questions?
Any questions for City Clerk's office? Councilmember Carr?
Just one, Kimberly, you do handle all public records requests for the city. Is that accurate? Handle public records requests for the city? You handle all of them?
I do not work on the ones for the police department.
Okay, do you feel you, you feel you do have enough staffing in that area with regard to the number of requests we've seen to receive, or?
I appreciate you asking that. At the, at this time, yes. I would say 80, 84, 82 to 84% of our requests are building-related. And we have digitized all the close permit records. So it doesn't take an excessive amount of staffing time to finalize those. It's other types of requests that we receive that we, that really take up our hours. So no, I'm good for records requests.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so no other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Matthew Grambo, Interim Director of Development Services. For our proposed budget for FY '25, you can see it's about a $28 million request. Important to note, approximately 60% of our department budget is through the building fund. This year, though, is proposed to be about a 1% decrease due to stabilizing building and permitting activity after Hurricane Ian. And we are requesting one position in our code compliance division, the research specialist position. We are also requesting two replacement vehicles under our building fund for our building inspectors per the replacement schedule. They're F-150 trucks. Our primary goals and priorities for this upcoming year, continuing to reduce our initial building plan review times to the goal of five days or less, continuing to streamline our entergov permitting and licensing software system, transitioning all of our owner-builder permit applications to be available online, and fully utilize our customer self-service portal, working within our land development division to establish contracts for third-party engineering assistance to expedite our site plan reviews and plat reviews. In our planning division, working to increase our land use amendments for our commercial lands, preserving our commercial lands to improve the utilization of lands throughout the city. And finally, to do a thorough review of all of our codes and ordinances to identify areas of improvement. Next month, we actually have a commercial permitting kaizen event scheduled to work with the industry and look at all potential improvements that we can do internally or to propose some changes to our land development code to improve efficiency and better align the permitting process for our long-term vision. For our accomplishments this past fiscal year, we had a lot of success with reducing our residential permit review times and our commercial permit review times. About a 34% reduction for residential, about a 42% reduction for commercial. A lot of this was the increased utilization of our third-party assistance in plan review and inspections, as well as decreasing permit activity after Hurricane Ian. We maintained our Class V CRS rating for floodplain management. And for the next year, our primary budget goals are reducing our expenditures, thus the 1% reduction to pre-Hurricane Ian amounts. Slight correction with the additional staffing. The additional position, which is our research specialist, is within our code compliance division. And then, of course, the two replacement vehicles for building code. A bit of additional detail on the one requested position, which is in the general fund. The research specialist position will be in the code compliance division and is designed to assist the supervisors in code compliance with some of the more straightforward tasks, including certified mailings, printing, notices of violation. This person would be tasked with assisting our commercial task force with gathering site plans and landscape plans to assisting code cases involving commercial landscaping and commercial sites. This person would also be tasked with doing significant short-term rental research to assist in code cases for short-term rental violations. And this person would also do day-to-day research to assist our code officers who are in the field. The idea behind this position is to take some of that pressure off of our supervisors and our code officers to increase their ability to generate new code cases, prepare for an accelerated cadence of special magistrate hearings. Our goal is to have a special magistrate hearing every single week in fiscal year 2025. So with that increase in hearings and the increase, projected increase in new code cases that may be going to these hearings, it's important to have someone who can do research as well as do the mailings and the printing of the NOVs to keep that streamlined. So again, one position being requested for fiscal year '25 within our code compliance division, the two vehicles and a reduction of expenditures after Hurricane Ian. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Matt's department, Community Development? Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Matt, you looked at, I'm looking at your accomplishments in '23. You had a reduction of 34% and 42% in residential and commercial permit review times. Can you translate that to days from what to what?
Sure. For, last year, we were approximately 12 to 15 days for initial review. So that's how long it would take once the review started to once all the reviewers were completed. We do concurrent reviews, meaning that building reviews, zoning reviews, land development reviews are all conducted at the same time for projects. So it's an overall decrease once the permit application was into the review team from when the day started until the, and once the review period started until all reviews were completed and all comments provided to the applicant. Or if there was a rejection due to a failed review, the comments provided back to the permit applicant.
Okay, so in comparison to your goals, based on your projections, to try to get to five days on initial review, you want to go from 12 to 15 to five?
Correct. And right now, we're at approximately seven or eight days.
Okay. And you can do that without any additional staffing? You're not asking for any, is that?
Correct. We're utilizing third-party assistance for plan review. So currently, we have two firms that we utilize for plan review services. And then we have about, we actually, at the beginning of the year, had about six different inspection firms that we were utilizing. We have been downscaling our utilization on the inspection side of things. The last two months, we've been below 10,000 inspections per month for the first time in over two years. But on the plan review side, we're still maintaining the levels with those third-party firms to continue to reduce those days. We also are continuing to hire staff plans examiners in all disciplines. We currently have about three vacancies that are, that are open. We're currently, those positions are open currently. We're doing interviews regularly. Difficult positions to hire currently, especially for fully licensed inspect, plans examiners. But the goal is to continue to streamline our processes, to get the documentation to the review team a little bit more quickly, and also to focus on making a consistent workload for all of our plans reviewers. And then the goal over the next year, as we continue to see decreases for accessory permits after Hurricane Ian, is to reallocate reviews to staff reviewers and continue to downscale the utilization of our third-party plans examiners.
Great, thank you for that. You also mentioned that the code division, you plan on going to one compliance hearing a month?
Per week.
Per week. There's, based on what I know, there should be a significant increase in costs associated with that. Is there an increase in your budget for that operating expense?
So we are, we are currently working on an RFP for the additional special magistrate time. We do have an outside services budget increase that is a part of that within the general fund and is incorporated into the operating expenditures. The hourly rate also will, is proposed to increase to be competitive in getting an additional special magistrate. That's currently something we're working on right now.
Okay, so is it in your proposed '25 budget to cover the costs associated with that?
I believe so, yes. Mark Mason just confirmed, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. The position, obviously, I support that. I think it's necessary based on the workload in that office with regard to what their responsibilities are, as outlined by you. But I was just concerned with that comment about the weekly meetings. I know, I know the expenses associated with that are significant. Another thing, too, is I know we had a recent ordinance change with regard to immediate action with regard to compliance or bringing properties into compliance at our expense with reimbursement through liens. Is there any money in the budget to finance that endeavor?
With the daily running fines, that should offset some of that cost in terms of the additional costs associated with actually directly remediating, whether it be cutting grass, removing debris that's in the lawn. I believe that there's no money in the budget that is directly associated with that task. But with the daily fines that are associated with both the 9/16 health and sanitation violations as well as the construction site violations, that should be able to cover a large proportion or all the cost of remediating.
So that analysis has been done, that we think the fines are going to cover the cost of remediation?
I don't believe, uh...
It's not a fair question. Don't, you don't have to answer that. I think I know the answer. But I guess the point is, is I think that that's a significant, potentially significant amount of money if we start to remediate some of these code violations as the new ordinance allows. And I just wanted to know if we were anticipating a budget for that in this next year's budget? I know it's difficult to do at the enactment time, but I think moving forward, I think it's something that we should try to contemplate and maybe figure out what the needs may be, just as a suggestion. If it's not in here, I think it should be, quite honestly. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Matt, the use of outside, you know, plan reviewers and inspectors, obviously with the influx of need because of the hurricane and whatnot, it was just a matter, we didn't have the manpower to do it. And I know you mentioned that you were looking to hire and replace using outside. Certainly, using outside gives us a little bit of diversification as well, someone to rely upon when we can't do it internally. But from the standpoint of the budget, have we found that we're better off with an internal person budget-wise than we are with using an outside firm?
Absolutely. It definitely, when it comes to the budget, is better to have the staff member. Typically, there's a premium associated with utilizing third-party assistance, especially with plan review or building official services. We just recently hired a full-time staff building official, so we're no longer utilizing a third-party for that service. But also, it's, you need your reviewers when you need your reviewers, especially with the volume. And typically, we're working constantly to do a better job of recruitment, retaining our licensed plans examiners and ensure that we're fully staffed throughout the building division, especially when it comes to plan review. It's still a very, very difficult position to hire for in the state of Florida, a very competitive market with our local jurisdictions. There are individuals that come down from other states, and it often makes more sense for them to work in the private sector for a couple of years, two, three, four years, rather than to become a full-time municipal employee when they know that they're only going to be working for a couple of years pre-retirement. So the, these firms that do the third-party plan review, third-party inspections are excellent at recruiting that out-of-state talent, working with them to get their provisional licenses. And, you know, they, in many jurisdictions in the area, they're utilizing those services. The Village of Astero nearly completely utilizes third-party for their building division. Where we are currently, especially with the volume decreasing after Ian, we're feeling very confident at our ability to downscale the utilization of our third-party resources, especially with these lingering accessory permits and Ian repair permits that are coming to completion through inspections. And moving forward, if we are able to get to be fully staffed and retain the staff members that we have, we'll be able to start phasing out the utilization of those, of those resources. And when we project for permitting activity in future years, at that point, we can determine whether we're going to need additional internal staff members.
And to that end, the research specialist that you're asking for, is that, is the availability of that skill better than it is the inspectors and the plan reviewers? And will the hiring of that person give some time back to those reviewers and inspectors that we have?
So the, the research specialist is specific to the code compliance division. And that particular position does not require any certifications or licenses. It's more of an administrative support person. We do have, which we have, are just recently fully filled a vacancy for a permit specialist position within our building division that is responsible for plan review-related tasks. So with that person now being onboarded and starting, he just started on Monday, that is the position that really takes some of the bandwidth needs away from our plans examiners and allows them to focus on reviews.
Okay, gotcha. Well, if the research specialist will assist our code department in our efforts to enhance our code enforcement with the legislation that we've recently put through to speed that process and to give more... to speed that process and to give more flexibility to the code enforcement offers, if that research specialist supports that effort, then I can support that request.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Sounds like everybody supports that one position.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think it's 3:50. Do you want to take a 10-minute break?
Yeah.
Let me take a 10-minute break, give everybody... We'll come back at 4 o'clock.
You guys ready? Ready Dan? I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Now, turn it over to the next presenter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. Here to present the budget for the newly proposed position or Department of Emergency Management and Resilience. So, this is $1.7 million, just under, for this new Department of note. This is all existing funds that is coming under the All Hazards Fund. So, this is money that's already contained within our existing budget through dedicated funds through All Hazards for this designed purpose. No additional staffing requests beyond those that are in this new proposal. For the capital outlay, we've got a replacement of a staff vehicle in 27, 25, and then in 27, it's a replacement of a trailer generator, and then also there in 28 is another staff vehicle. So, the Department of Emergency Management Resilience is going to be focused on the six primary things. It's trying to prevent, prepare, respond, recover, and mitigate future natural and human-caused disasters. And at the heart of all those things is resilience and making sure our community is prepared to face the challenges that it will certainly face and be prepared for any future challenges. We are looking at becoming EMAP accredited. So, there's a national standard for emergency management agencies for us to achieve towards. We have a number of plans. Some of those are contained through EMAP and other things we need to do to further our preparedness. We have another number of these things that are funded through grants and other methods as well. We also have the expansion of the Emergency Operations Center. As you're aware, we've received $18 million in the last two years in state appropriations for that expansion. This last year, we were able to accomplish updating our emergency operations plan, our continuity of government plans, and our continuity of operations plans. We were able to have an exercise for all emergency operations staff and complete our threat hazard vulnerability assessment. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this presentation? Okay, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mark Mason, Financial Services. The Financial Services budget is estimated at $24 million for fiscal year 2025. So, we have no position requests included in the budget. Overall, we have one vehicle that we need to replace for our field service reps downstairs in customer billing services. And overall, our goal for the, for the, for next year is we're deploying, we're deploying our new budget development software. Some of the information, that's one of the items that you've seen in your, in your book that has been published for you for the proposed policy, proposed book. We're also updating the city's grant management policy. We've been, and we've held our first training on that policy. And what we're trying to get to as far as coalescing the, the grants through financial services out into the various departments, although each department has their own grant writer, there needs, there's a reporting requirement that funnels through financial services for that purpose. We also have, we've, we're looking at increasing our e-bill, e-enrollment or e-bill enrollment for our utility billing. Currently at 35%, we're looking at 40%. Since we changed over systems a couple of years ago, it's been a, it's, it's been a struggle to get folks to, to sign up. Part of that was our customer bill, our customer service system that we have, which we're going to be replacing come October 1. So, we expect that once we get this replaced, be easier to use. Some of the features that will come along with it is that folks that have the ability to see their usage on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis, they'll actually be able to go in here and see that. During the course of the past year, we've deployed some new towers or new collectors throughout the city. So, we're taking advantage of the, the type of meters that we have in the ground to be able to help people read this. They can set up alerts when their, when their water usage exceeds a particular average water usage that they would normally see on a daily basis. So, there's, we're excited about this, and we're, you know, we're certainly looking forward to getting that out and about. Finishing up on the deployment of the advanced metering infrastructure, we're about 80% done, and we have a 20% left to go. So, we expect to have that done in the next couple of years. Also, in risk and safety, we currently conduct three risk and safety assessments per month. And we're looking, and so we continue to do that, and we'll continue to focus our efforts on the risk and safety in our, all of our locations, well as our parks, et cetera. We're also looking at deploying some sole source electronic workflow in Ambase, support our purchasing folks for the, the sole source. You know, right now, it's a very manual process. You gotta get it signed, you gotta take it over here, get somebody else sign it. So, we're putting it into a electronic workflow system. And of course, we're also reinstituting the commercial paper program that will be, in the beginning, a little time-consuming, but over the course of the, of the period that it will be outstanding, we'll be able to devote the time and effort in our staffing, current staffing, to be able to do that. Some of the things that we've, we've accomplished during this year is that we've received the Triple Crown Award. Thank you for the city manager for recognizing that. Facilitated the first citywide grant training, which we talked about, as well as we've updated our pay-by-phone options to reduce our call times. So, right now, we don't have as many, our call times that call in for customer service have been reduced significantly over the past four months. Some of the things we're looking for, we're to do in '25, continue our full potential budget software purchased in 2024. We're putting in this new customer-facing utility billing software, which is Resident Access, which we believe will be very helpful to customers with utilities, utility billing, and of course, continue our service levels for the community. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding financial services? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mike Russell, Acting Fire Chief. So, the first slide you have is a big overview of the various larger areas of the department where we have expenses. Key interest here would be our staffing request. In this request, we'll be able to have growth at two of our existing fire stations that only have one response unit out of there, particularly one at Station 9, which also has one of our marine vessels, and they could be out on the water for several hours, leaving that district unprotected or relying on other districts to protect Station 9. So, we are asking to add a rescue unit to that station. And then Station 12 as well has one unit, and we will be able to see some increases in the special operations responses from that, from that station. Next is the Fire Safety Educator. Currently, that duty, duties and responsibilities is split in between, one FTE does that, as well as all of our public messages and public affairs efforts. So, we're asking to split that position. With over 17 schools in, in the city, there's unique fire education needs with all of those. So, that will allow us to better address the, the unique education needs of, of the various schools and the youth in our community. Here again, another overview of some of the expenses, whether it be building new fire stations, improving existing fire stations, the equipment expenses that we have to do year over year to, to maintain them, and then ultimately, our fleet request, which will give us fleet sustainability into the future. Next is some department goals and priorities for the future. We want to ensure that the department continues to grow with parallel growth to the, to the growth that the city has seen. Fully implement a National Fire Protection Agency, 1730 recurring inspection for, fire safety inspections for existing buildings. Improve the new hire orientation process and classes, and the department-wide training efforts with the, hopefully, the opening of the fire training facility in January. Design phases two and three of the training facility, and then explore and revise the deployment model for all technical rescue services. So, that could be the marine team, dive team, hazmat, or the urban search and rescue team, some of which we actually have members deployed for the hurricane efforts today. Accomplishments from last year, we were proud to announce that we were accredited through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. We've designed the North Cape government, Public Safety Complex, complex, rather, which will house Station 10. We've begun construction on the training facility Phase 1. We've opened Station 13 as well. Some highlights for the next fiscal year is the Fire Safety Educator position that, that I mentioned that will allow us to grow that program, the Station 9 Rescue Crew, and the rebuild and relocation of current Station 5. I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for, for the Fire Department? Councilmember Carr?
Quick question. There's a position on there for Grant Writer Coordinator. Is that a, an additional position? Is the, will it be the only position? I mean, what is, what's the purpose of that?
So, that is an additional position. That was, the need for that was recognized with all of the hazard mitigation funds, et cetera, those grant opportunities that are available to, to the department and the city. And then also help manage the accreditation process for the Department of Emergency Management. So, there'll be a dual role with that, that position. And we would also entertain moving that position in Emergency Management and then absorbing one of their positions, the Community Risk Reduction Specialist, which is a fire-centric position.
So, how many Grant Writer positions are there in the Fire Department?
We, currently, we have one. That also manages all of our accreditation efforts.
Okay. The other question, are you, is, is the fire review and fire inspection part of the Fire Department budget?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any information on that with regard to any staffing needs there, or with regard to fire plan review, or?
Earlier this year, council approved three new fire inspectors and a fire plans reviewer to add to the existing staff, and we believe those, that staff is sufficient at this time. We are looking to maybe reclassify two positions internally in there that would improve the workflow efforts there. But at this time, I think we're down to, to one or two days for inspection turnaround, et cetera. So, I, I don't believe that there's any need at this time. But in the future, as the city continues to grow, we would certainly look at additional staff in future budget years.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Just so I understand, the Grant Writer Coordinator, we already have one, so we're looking for a second one?
All right. So, yes, we're bringing in a second one, but what will end up happening is that we will swap this position for another position in Emergency Management. It's not built into the budget yet because it hasn't been approved. But there is a position in, in Emergency Management that is, as the Fire Chief just pointed out, is more fire-centric. What is the name of that position? I'm sorry.
It's the Community Risk Reduction Specialist. So, handles a lot of our adult education needs, drowning prevention, et cetera. So, it's a fire-centric position that's currently assigned in Emergency Management.
So, that position will end up coming over back to the Fire Department, and this Grant Writer Coordinator position will actually go over to Emergency Management in support of their hazard mitigation grants, as well as the CDBGR, DR grants that they'll also be managing, as well as other grants that may come through on, on Emergency Management.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I understand the Fire Safety Educator, the, the five firefighters and the three fire engineers, drivers. With regard to response time and with regard to overtime, would, would those eight positions meet the current need to maintain response time and help eliminate overtime? Would the overtime remain the same and response time decrease? Could you speak to those two things, the effect of those eight people?
Right. So, the, the goal is to reduce the response time. So, when you add a unit to a district, that's because the call volume is exceeding what one response apparatus could do. So, now, the response time increases when a secondary unit from another station has to come into that district to handle response time. So, we believe that the call volume in these districts have, has outgrown the single unit to where they necessitate the second unit. So, when we do these positions, we also have a staffing multiplier that takes into account how many people you actually need to operate the unit with consideration for how much time they take off as well. So, it does have a built-in factor there to help reduce the overtime requirement for those positions. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Nancy Deutsch, Human Resources Director. Our budget request for the upcoming year is $47 million, up 10%. As you can see, that's largely funded by the Self Insurance Fund at 95%. The remaining 5% is from the General Fund. At this time, we have no staffing requests. We do have one request for the, on the asset management side, which is to replace scanner that is needed. We have a, an outdated five-year scanner right now that needs to be replaced. So, that's what that request is for. As far as our goals and priorities, we've been putting a lot of emphasis on applicant tracking, onboarding, finding talent. So, we would like to evaluate our existing applicant tracking system. It doesn't necessarily meet all of the needs and capabilities that we would like, so we'd like to evaluate that. There is an additional cost potentially to do that, depending on the vendor that we select. We would also like to do an expansion of the succession planning module that is currently in place through our SABA training program. We also plan to complete a request for proposals for additional classification and compensation consultant services. We anticipate doing more of that in the upcoming year, as well as doing some video training for our employee self-service module through our Tyler Enterprise System. We also will be entering negotiations, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, with our, our FOP for the 2025. And we'll be planning some, on the labor relations front, some additional ongoing drug awareness training. Some of the accomplishments, we did do some drug awareness training this past year, particularly for our safety-sensitive positions, and those efforts were very successful. We reduced employee drug testing positive results from three per month down to zero. We implemented a new international education verification system. It was taking upwards of three months, actually, to verify candidates from out of, out of the country, verify their education as part of the onboarding process, and we've reduced that down to 15 business days. We successfully implemented the Munis Enterprise HR payroll system and moved many of our payroll action forms and terminations, retirements, ad pays, so forth, all electronic now, which has greatly enhanced our efficiency in the department. As far as our upcoming highlights, as I mentioned, will be, in addition to the applicant tracking system, the onboarding is typically also part of that. So, we will be looking at onboarding software. We have asked, the city manager has expressed interest in, in doing additional leadership training. We've done some of that. We implemented some of that very recently to train some of our upcoming and, and potential future leaders. So, we'd like to do more of that leadership training, and the city manager has asked to expand employee appreciation and recognition events, so we anticipate doing more of that. And of course, I've already mentioned the new schedule. We'll be developing a new schedule for classification and compensation studies going forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding human resources? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Michelle Hoffman, IT Director. Most important thing about my budget is I have four staff requests this year. As, as you heard from my colleagues before me, we, as a city, continue to adopt a lot of software, hardware, tools to improve processes and procedures in the other departments, and that continues to add cumulatively to the work that, that IT needs to do, not only just to help install the, the tools or the software, but then to continue to run them, keep them secure, keep them up to date, so on and so forth, administrative-type tasks. So, that adds to our workload. Also adding to our workload are things like additional locations where we either are now housing people, staff, like Parks and Rec locations, or just locations now where we've decided technology is a good thing to have, such as Wi-Fi and cameras in different parks, and, and so on and so forth. So, that adds greatly to my networking team's efforts. They have to travel, you know, to upgrade these things or replace them when they're broken or vandalized. And, you know, the city's quite large, and so it takes a lot of time on the road to, to get to all these locations when, when things go wrong or need replacing or upgrading. So, I have, my four staff requests are the Associate Network Security Administration position, which I just talked about. The, we have a technician and a system administrator position. Just to give you an idea of our, our numbers that we support, we have, we support 1,000 desktops, 1,100 laptops, tablets, and cell phones that, that are used out in the, on the road. We have 4,000 Chromebooks that we support. So, in total, that's 7,100 computing devices, and now we're not talking servers or routers or Wi-Fi devices. So, the numbers of things that we have to keep updated and secured throughout the city is, is quite large. So, we're asking for a, an IT technician supervisor. We have six techs today. We have two at the schools at all times. We have one that is at PD at all times. We have two at City Hall, and then we have one that is, again, roaming. And then depending on where our fires are, we might have to switch out and take another person from City Hall. So, we're looking for a technician supervisor to look over them that will help alleviate some of the other tasks that this, this current staff and systems does. We're asking for another systems administrator. Systems administrators come into play for things like updates, but, but also for things like rolling out new Microsoft tools. And then anytime we have additions of staff, changes of staff, promotions, demotions, department changes, so on and so forth, that puts a burden on, on us to either get their machine and reimagine it, or, or things like who's going to get their email going forward? Do they need email? What, what products do they need? Getting them set up with the right levels of, of access to all of these tools. So, we have a lot every time there is a new, a new person or a person moves around in, in any way. And then the last position that we were looking for was GIS, a graphical information specialist. Again, I think you all know how important maps are to the operations of the city, and we're running pretty thin there. We have only two people in the, in the department right now. They're responsible not only for the, the general maps and applications, but also the administration of, of the systems, making sure they're up and running, up to date, the right access is there, they're secure, and so on and so forth. So, any questions?
Thank you. I'll open up for, for any questions for our, our IT department. Councilmembers, thank you.
Just a quick one. I can appreciate looking to save money wherever you can save money. I'm concerned on capital outlay that we've had relatively consistent need for capital outlay, and yet I don't see anything in '25, '26, or '27. And as, 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 you know, IT progresses and, and hardware and, and software changes, how would there not be anything?
So, it's, it's actually on the next page. I asked about it here, and I was, I was, the explanation was it was sort of a, a change in the way they were categorizing the capital that I'm spending, so it's not showing up on that, on the first page. But it is listed. You'll see in '25, I've got $4 million, a little more in 4.1 million. So, and then we go down to 3.2 million when we come up, when we finish our fiber project. You see that number drop in 2027.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Which page did you say?
Uh, let's see, which page number? 67 has the, has my asset management plan, the capital.
Okay. All right, then, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. I should change the page.
Any particular reason why it's not on the other page?
Basically, it's how it's categorized. Apparently, it's a 5-6 object code versus a 5-5 object code. It's, you know, I'm gonna take a look at that and try to bring it back out to the front. Because it should be out in the front, and, you know, so you can see everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had the same assumption that Councilmember Stanky did, that it was kind of ironic that for three years, you didn't see any capital outlay, but apparently, that's not the case. So, thank you. Don't see any other questions. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Joe Patrello, Parks and Recreation Director. For fiscal year '25, we have, you know, it says, it looks like we had like a 79% increase from our adopted budget. That's obviously with, as we move forward from the amended budget, it goes down a bit. All from, a lot from capital outlay with the parks and things that we're building within the community at this time. We are looking for just over three new positions. One is a geographic information and systems application specialist, and the rest are contract employees that are being utilized at the Faith Presbyterian or the Cape South Community Center, which is what we're gonna go by, that we just were approved for a lease at the last council meeting. Some of our goals for this year, definitely one of our biggest goals is the Parks Recreation Master Plan update and developing a strategic framework to guide the department for the next five years, five to 10 years. We're also gonna be looking at doing a recreation program assessment and a facility usage analysis to see if our program delivery is in line with the community needs. We're really gonna focus on our special populations program as well and look at expansion and a little bit of a therapeutic recreation realm, and then hosting local and regional tournaments, working with sports facilities companies that are like Kennedy Rocket Center. working with sports facilities companies that are like Kennedy Rocket Center is definitely a focus, and at Festival Park as it comes onboard, hopefully next, in the future. Some of our accomplishments, we opened the Yacht Club Beach. We had a new partnership with Gulf Coast Humane Society to provide pet food for senior citizens who needed assistance, opened parks at Del Prado, Linear, Gator Trail, Sands Park, Joe Covial Park, and Cultural Park, hosted 20-plus citywide events, including the inaugural New Year's Eve celebration, which was well-received by the community. And our 2025 highlights is working on, continuing to work on deferred maintenance projects at Cape Coral Sports Complex, Jim Jeffords and Pelican Soccer, JCPark Shoreline improvements, and design for Cape Coral Sports Complex facility expansion and a new neighborhood park that we've put in our capital improvement program. With that, have any questions?
Any questions regarding Parks Department, Councilmembers? Stonkey, is that laid on from before?
Nope, no one.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a question as it relates to the geographic information system application specialist. IT is asking for one as well. Is this, we're gonna hire two of them, one in each department, or we need similar skills that can be used across both?
Correct. There was one for each department from what I'm aware of. One, from speaking with Mike, he wanted one in our department as well with the implementation of Cartograph and all of our asset system, asset management systems within the parks. We really felt there was a need within the department to manage and document everything within our system.
And with the thought of some of the, some of our newer parks coming out of Festival Park, down the road, JCPark changed there, Yacht Club, it would seem that we would need more supervision, more drive-bys. You know, at this point in time, the driving-by yacht club hasn't really been needed for a while. As we've brought more and more of these parks online, to have your staff that you need, park rangers, the supervision and security of our parks, I don't really see that on here. Could you speak to that?
I did request some. We felt at this time, as the parks really aren't online fully at this point, so I think we're gonna look to continue to add them and request them in the future years.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions or comments for Parks? Thank you, sir.
There we go. The right arrow. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tony Sizemore, Police Chief. Looking at our presentation, the largest thing that jumps out is staffing requests, as with every year. This November will be four years for me in this position, believe it or not, and when I assumed the position of Police Chief in November of 2020, we were significantly behind in personnel to be able to accomplish the expectations and goals for the community. We've made great strides in the budgets since then, and we continue to make those great strides, but this is a continuation of that plan, that original plan, to get us caught up both in technology, infrastructure, and within human resource or assets. So if you look at, well, before I get into that, what I started with in that first year and continued with this year is the book of our Personnel Growth Development Plan, or our Personnel Growth Plan, that marries up with our budget, and you have always been provided that. This year is no exception. And in that book, I think we've developed a relationship, and a relationship built on trust, that when I present that book or my staffing requests, they are needs versus wants, and that's the stance that we take in the department when we prepare that, when we conduct our strategic planning exercises and develop our growth plan, is that it is consistently needs over wants. That's number one given, and the second given is that I won't, I don't believe it's ethically or responsible to ask you to continue to add personnel if we are greater than a 10% vacancy rate, and we are well underneath that at this point. We are hovering just at or slightly below a 5% vacancy rate in our sworn ranks. Our professional staff is slightly higher, but when you exclude our dispatch, which is its own unique set of circumstances for personnel, if you remove them from the equation, we are dramatically below 10% vacancy rate on our professional staff side. So with that, I will get into the personnel requests that we have. So these are needs versus wants, and we are, I think, ethically appropriate for us to receive additional personnel. So if you split them into professional staff and sworn, on the professional staff side for FY '25, we have a 911 operator that is to keep pace with not only police, but also with fire, and in their accreditation process, it was one of the highlights that was noted, was the recommendation to continue to increase our 911 call takers, and that is in, directly related to that, in addition to our own. We have one crime analyst on there that is assigned to that Tactical Intelligence and Analytics Center, or TX Center, that you guys were able to visit on a SHADE meeting. There's also a tie-in on the crime analyst to a particular type of crime that has been placed back onto the local law enforcement. It's a child sex crime, an internet sex crime type of a case that has been reassigned back to the locals, so we've had an exponential increase in those types of crimes. This crime analyst directly helps with those investigations. That's one where there's such a high volume and such a seriousness to them, you really can't afford to have any miss of them or missteps with them. So that's a, definitely a need. There's one customer service rep that is in our records department with the increase in personnel, the increase in work product. There is an increase of work that needs to be processed in our records department. That's directly related to that. We also have an IT systems administrator position on the professional staff side, and that is a direct reflection of the last several budget cycles of very high-dollar software and hardware programs that are put in. One example is last year, there's, I believe, a $3 million CAD RMS system that is being developed, and that is gonna launch, and we will be fully operational with that come October. That should dovetail with this budget. That's been over a year worth of building in that program. We also have a contract with Axon Technologies that does not only our tasers, our body cameras, our in-car video systems, which are also mobile LPR readers. It's also all of our evidence housing of digital properties. It's a huge outfit. It's a 10-year, $13 million contract that was approved by you in the past. So we have multimillion-dollar programs that are getting ready to be launched, and currently the way we have it, it's a part-time outfit for somebody else. For example, the Axon or TASER function is, just happens to be administered now by people in our training unit who have some knowledge of it. When this goes fully live, you get, you get full-time trouble with part-time help. We need to have somebody that's gonna be day-to-day, every day, running these, these very large multimillion-dollar technical, technological projects that we have. And then you get to the sworn side. It's a little bit easier to explain the sworn side. There's eight police officers that we're adding, that are, the bulk of them are gonna be in our Investigations Bureau. Like I mentioned, there's a big uptick in, on the Special Victims Unit side, without getting too descriptive on some of those cases. It's been well documented that we have a very large increase in financial crimes, which include our construction fraud, crimes that are happening. We also have a significant uptick in our narcotics activity and the participation in regional task forces that we belong to, in addition to a statute change where overdose deaths can, that can be linked back to the dealer, can be charged with homicide, so we have a lot of, or an increase in homicide investigations directly related to that. This is where the bulk of these investigative positions are gonna go. We have one, it's a community services police officer. What we're doing is they're assigned in the same bureau with all of our school resource officers, and there's a significant uptick in threats, school threats, written threats, and those are investigated by a detective. There's also a liaison effect with the Department of Juvenile Justice for our recidivism rate of juvenile offenders. That's what this officer will do. And then there is one police officer that's listed, kind of an outlier. That is a replacement of a promotion that we did for this fiscal year earlier. There was a promotional list that was gonna expire. We had a great candidate, was the last candidate on the eligibility list, and the delta in what the salary savings would be to promote at the very last day of the eligibility of that list in relation to the fiscal year was cheaper than letting it expire and doing another test in FY '25. So we moved that up quicker, but that officer needs to be replaced, and the savings was realized by waiting until FY '25. That's a replacement. That's why there's an oddball, just one particular generic police officer hanging there. So that's the description of the large amount of personnel that we're adding. I'll go through this. I'll come back to capital if there's any questions particularly about it, goals and Continue to maintain the partnerships. There's no change here. I mean, there's really no secret about what our goals and priorities are. Accomplishments, number one is why we're all here, maintain the status as one of the safest cities in Florida with a population over 150, we're the eighth-largest city and the third-most populous state in the country, and to maintain this, this metric is truly victory for not only a police department, but the partnership that we have with the citizens, that's in our mission. Accomplished an increase in the number of community events that we do, and also in a digital format. We onboarded last budget year a public information specialist to help us keep up with the growing expectation of transparency and information sharing, and I think we've taken it to another level in this last year. I touched briefly on transitioning to the new CAD RMS system. That, as you know, as you know, that is the brain of your, of your operation. That's a generational purchase. The last time we updated our CAD RMS system was 2003, 2002, 2003, so these last a really long time. They're a huge investment, so that's a big accomplishment that's bleeding over into FY ' '25. Adding the positions is big, that, those are just additional or new FTEs. We also have about a 10% attrition rate, which is normal in policing, so we onboard about 30 people a year. That's a highlight for our personnel and training. And then the new training facility, we are gonna be taking occupation of that building probably within the next 30 days, moving in and really hitting the ground running and being operational in calendar year '25, or the beginning of the second quarter of fiscal year '25. Back up, and I threw a lot at you, so I'm here if you have any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Chief. I do have a couple of questions I wanna ask you. I knew you had discussed the growth plan, the five-year growth plan, that I know we all received, and I have it up here before me now, and I appreciate your presentation today. If you could, tell me what was cut out of, out of the requests that you had regarding your five-year growth plan.
Yes, there were some dedicated traffic or Special Operations Bureau traffic unit positions that were in the growth plan, and then in working with the Finance Department and City Management, those, those positions were cut on my direction. There was a dollar amount that needed to be cut, which is not uncommon in the sausage-making of a municipal budget, right? What you have here today is a final presentation, but the working out of numbers that we do, I believe we went from, we had to cut from 1.9 to 1.3. I think there was a $600,000 cut that needed to be hap, that needed to be achieved. The ask that I have and the partnership that I have with Mr. Mason and Mr. Ilchison is that if there needs to be a reduction in a number, which is common in the working out of a municipal budget, let me decide what's gonna get cut, because what may look like an obvious untouchable would be one of the first things cut, because some of the other positions can increase efficiencies that you may not see if you're not in my position. And I'll give you an example. When you see the news or you hear all of the publicity that traffic gets, why would I cut traffic as opposed to other? And the reason that I would, that I did that, there are all needs, I don't wanna cut any of it, but I also understand I live in this world and have to do things like that. I have the ability to replicate a traffic unit through innovative ways. I can, I can use intelligence, I can use our analytics unit, I can use historical data to come up with trends, and I can utilize a combination of grant funding that we, that we acquire, federal and state grant funding. I can use self-funded details that we utilize through salary savings and old-fashioned general fund overtime to do a temporary way to increase my traffic unit. So essentially, I can predict, fund, and place the cut of that traffic unit by getting into all of the investigative positions that I, that I recommended that we fund. I can't predict when the next high-profile missing person, or homicide, or child sex trafficking, or multi-jurisdictional drug, a lot of them have a nexus to violent crime, so if there's a dope ripoff and then a subsequent murder aggravated battery in our city or shootout, although I'd love to be able to predict those, I can't. I have to fund those with full-time people, so the most logical cut for me would be those traffic ones, not to cut them and forget them, but cut them and find an alternate way to be able to still replicate that productivity. Now, it's a short-term fix. That's not, I won't be able to likely do that at this time next year from the podium, but for, from October to October, I can do that, and that's kind of the Sophie's Choice of budget cuts that you have to do when you present needs. So it's a longer answer. I just wanted to put the responsibility where it lies. I own that. I was the one who did it. There was a scientific reason for why I chose what I chose, because I can still replicate that work on a short-term, kind of a duct tape basis, if that makes sense.
I guess another question I'd like to ask is, do you feel there's a need for that unit today?
I believe there's a need for all of the stuff that I present to you in that book.
You know, I've been here for, I don't know, six, seven years now, about six years, and I, one thing that I know about you, everything that you ask for is a need and not necessarily a want, like you had mentioned. I even took it a little further. I went and looked at some of the crimes, the accident statistics here in the city. If you look at the report that I believe your office presented back in April of this year, you can see a rise each and every year for the crash, major crash investigation units when they're called out. Each year it's going up. Some of us that are on the Transportation Advisory Committee, we had the opportunity to have Stan Tech there going over our, our traffic needs analysis in our city, and I had asked the individual, the expert that was there representing that firm that day, how our statistics are as far as crashes are in Lee County. We're one of the top two worst counties in the state, Lee County and another. And I had asked her if there was an opportunity for us to implement additional traffic unit, should we consider that? She's the expert. She had all the statistics throughout the state. She said 100%, absolutely, if you have the opportunity or availability, make sure that you do that. For me, public safety, there's no, there's no... For me, public safety, there's no, there's no, that is a last resort where you provide cuts. And I know the city manager probably went to you, like every other department, and had mentioned that you have to cut a certain dollar amount, and the chief did exactly what he was asked to do. I think it's in a better interest of the community to make sure that we have those traffic units. We all know that traffic accidents are on the rise. We see major accidents weekly here in, if not daily, here in the city of Cape Coral. So when you look at the five-year growth plan and what is actually asked for, I agree with exactly what that growth plan model is, that's why you develop that model. When you look at the five officers, it's $511,360 is what the ask is for that. So you asked, where can you get that monies to provide those five police officers? Well, if you just look at today's discussions, we cut three positions in the city attorney's office. It's about $388,000 in salary, right there, just with that one decision that we made today. When you look at the overall ask for staffing that is proposed in the city manager's budget, we are looking at $6.3 million, just in personnel costs for next year's budget. If you break that down per quarter, it's about $1.5 million per quarter. And the reason that I say that is if we just wait to the second quarter to hire all the individuals that has been proposed, we'll save $1.5 million. Well, we all know that some of those positions, they won't be able to fill the first quarter. Shoot, we have a city, assistant city manager's position that's been vacant for nine, 10 months. We have deputy city attorney's position that's been open for six or seven months. We have 100, we did get that report, I believe we have 100 and, I've got it here in front of me, I believe 160 positions that are open when that particular report was asked for a few weeks ago. I believe 66 of those positions were one year or more, at least 35 of those positions was six months or more. So the monies is there very easily, in my opinion. Even if we just waited one quarter to hire everybody that was proposed, we'd save $1.5 million. We've saved 388,000 today just in the city attorney's office, and if we want to fill those positions, it's $511,000. So for me, that's a no-brainer for me. Public safety is priority number one. I think this council has always advocated for that, and there's no reason for me to cut those five positions. So I appreciate your honesty, Chief, but I think the needs there, I think we have the means to provide those positions, we just have to look for those monies, and I think looking for that $511,000 is pretty easy. So thank you for your presentation, that's all I have on that. Council members, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, Chief. In, with the community service police officer, I'm from a while back, I'm familiar with that at LCSO. If there wasn't a particular issue that that person was attending to, would that person be patrol?
I'm not sure I follow your question.
So the community services police officer, in a car, on the road, and then deals with issues as they come up, or only specialized issues do they attend to?
They deal exclusively with juvenile delinquency, DJJ liaison, and school threats. Sadly, there's enough for more than that of full-time work.
Okay, so we don't have one of those now?
No.
Okay.
We're kind of doing double duty and not, we've, we can't part-time it any longer.
I got it. And the new police training facility, FIRE had asked for an educator in their list. I don't see us with an educator, or how is the new police training facility staffed? Is it?
We have currently six bureaus. One of the bureaus that we have is the Professional Standards Bureau, that each bureau has sub-units. So there's personnel training, IA accreditation, there's the HR for the police department. Well, one of those sub-units is training. So we already have a staff of, a chain of command of trainers already, in-house. We use our own people as adjunct to come in and teach, and we also bring people outside the organization. We've already got that infrastructure. That's going to grow once we take occupancy of that in the next, but this time next year, we'll be growing that from a unit within the Professional Standards Bureau, it's going to stand up as its own training bureau and be working out of there. So I already have that, I don't need to add any of those people this year. We're not starting without, I don't exactly know the historical structure of what the FIRE department did with that, but we've had an in-house training and development team for over 20 years.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then last one's, Mayor, I see the total of eight personnel that are actual officers sworn, six and then two, and you'd mentioned a number of five positions. Which five were you talking about?
If you, if you review the growth plan that the police department put out this year, they had a total of 13 officers that they allocated for, for this year, not to include four cops grant officers, that depends upon if we get the grant enough. But there are 13 sworn officers that were asked for for this year. Five is a special ops, operations that Chief had mentioned, solely a traffic unit.
Okay, so you're talking about the difference between the growth plan and what this final ask is?
Exactly.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for being here. Can you just clarify, I know the eight positions, you articulate out what their responsibilities and what division they're going to be in, what bureau, and that's mainly for budgetary purposes, as far as I see it. I think there's been a misconception, at least some of the public people that I've spoken with with regard to your request, it appears to be one police officer. It's actually eight police officers in your request. These new positions that you want to bring into the department for investigative purposes would be backfilled after the recruitment and implementation of the patrol officer, is that correct?
That's correct. We don't hire people off the street and put them into specialized units. They come in to the entry level, sworn officers on the road, and those sworn officers out on patrol that have earned the ability to move into those specialized units will move in. So it's a backfill like that.
So for the purposes of your request, you're talking about where you want these staff to end up?
Correct. It's to put a little context, instead of me coming and saying, with the addition of those traffic, I need 13 people. It gives you, as the body and the public, a little bit more of, well, what do you mean, you need 13 people? What are you going to do? They're just going to be 13 more driving around on the road? No, no, we're growing and we're doing improvements in our business model, and we need the entry-level people, officers that come in is the business checking account. And once we get enough in that business checking account, we reinvest into major crimes, financial crimes, et cetera.
So the, we won't really realize the benefit of the new approach or the new positions that you're asking for and their new efforts, whether it be traffic or investigative purposes, for quite some time?
About half and half, yeah. It would be realistically into the second half of the fiscal year when we would start to get banged for the buck, but there are some people that we hire that are private, previous or prior experience, or EOT they're called, that accelerates that. There is some opportunity for us to, lack of a better word, we can run short, knowing that we're going to get paid back, you almost loan the person before, so there's little things you can do like that, but on a general sense, we don't get the ROI until probably late second quarter, maybe early third quarter of the fiscal.
Okay, thank you.
On a fresh, brand-new person, yes.
Thanks for that clarification. I just know there was some misunderstandings from some folks that I had spoken with, and I just wanted you to clarify that for them. With regard to the eight or the 13, obviously, I'm in full support of whatever we can afford to give you, obviously, based on your request. I do trust you, but personally, I would like to see more data with regard to the backup to your request, only just to see calls for service numbers. I mean, obviously, we know there's increase in population, but just the workload itself.
Sure.
Understanding the trust is there, that goes without saying, but for me, it's just nice to be able to see some of the backup, it helps with some of the citizenry that may not have that same trust that I do and other council members, just for some scrutiny, I guess, of your initial request.
Sure.
I just want to be, I'm a little bit confused, because I, we're, the budget presentation we're having today is based on the city manager's original request, not after the reduction that we've already imposed of the half-back rate, correct? Mike?
Right, the presentation is on the CM's proposed budget, allowed you to ask questions regarding what's in there, you know, look at the priorities that we've established. We are going to have to make cuts to the, and adjustments to what's being presented to you today.
That's where I'm trying to get to, and again, obviously, we can afford the 13, I support the 13. The chief is, feels comfortable with eight, I'm comfortable with that as well. So I'm kind of leaning on the expertise of the chief with regard to what his needs are. And he's saying eight is his need, that's what I would support, if we have to reduce the budget, which I think we do. I guess I just want to know, you know, at some point during this presentation, we're making our opinions known about what we think and our position, reallocation, reduction, maintaining, whatever, but at some point, are we going to get a recommendation about, you know, where the cuts can be made at some point during this presentation? Because we're still talking about a budget that we have already reduced, we're talking about the old budget, in a way. So I'm just a little bit leery about, you know, saying I support 13, you know what I mean? Because we may need to reduce that down, and I just kind of don't want to say I support 13 and then have to come right back to the table again to reduce it.
It's my intent to take the direction that I'm getting from this meeting today, to go back and work with Mark on coming up with a plan to fund the new revenue target that was established. So, for example, there was a discussion about the city attorney's items, I will get with him, see if he's serious about, you know, going with three, based on what was discussed from council, and we will then use that to start beginning, okay, now we have a new revenue target number, then we will come up with another, you know, basically our new revised budget to then present forward. And then you all let us know if those priorities are right, based on the target, and if not, we'll keep going back and forth.
Well, from the standpoint of priorities, public safety is obviously number one, and I support the 13 if we can at all afford it with regard to the reduced budget we've already asked for. So I would support the 13 of the original request, provided with the, I guess, the traffic officer positions, I believe, that you've stated today. So, and understanding that that realization will not occur for probably six months in actuality on the road in that form. But, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you so much.
If I could just expound on that a little bit, I don't want there to be a misconception with you or with the public that there's some, that there's a battle, or the city manager and I, we have the relationship that if it was too much to absorb, I would have told him, Mike, I can't do that. And we have the relationship where he would understand, it's not ideal, because, so to answer both, I don't want you to think I'm answering out of both sides of my mouth, I need all of them. But getting it done is the hard part of doing my job. So I know you need it, but can you get it done? I can, I can get it done, I've outlined ways for us to do it. Is it ideal? Does it supplant the need? No, it doesn't, but we can get it done, because there are bigger things at play, and I'm a part of the team here. So I just wanted the point to be that, and I'll include Mr. Mason in that too, we work together on this, and if it just wasn't able to be done, I have the ability and the freedom in my workplace to be able to tell him, Mike, I can't do that. I'm not playing that card. Is it comfortable? No. Is it a need? Sure, it certainly is, but it's, the difficult part of my job is to find creative ways to be able to make it work in the short term. And we've had that conversation, is this going to work beyond one fiscal year? No, it's not. It's not ideal, but, you know, I'm talking about the eight versus the 13.
And my plan, we've, Chief and I have discussed this, my plan is, if you all pass the speed zone cameras, the intent was to look at those cameras that are going at 18 or 23 places around the city and see if they deter or change driver habits, right? So five people working eight-hour shifts or 12-hour shifts gives me X amount of hours of traffic enforcement. 18 or 23 cameras throughout the city gives me X amount of traffic calming enforcement. But those also come with a revenue that could then further, when we bring in an amendment, if that gets passed and those go in and they start generating revenue, that could be the revenue that supports adding the additional five positions. So for me, based on, and all that happened, all those things happened way after the department started submitting their requests for personnel. So we're, they submitted, we need this, then you all said, hey, let's move forward with the red light cameras, and it was like, hmm, here's an opportunity to get even more traffic enforcement out there, 12 hours a day, you know, based on where they're at. And then also generate a revenue source that can turn around and start funding the additional officers to do nighttime work. So it's an evolving process, the budgets get submitted at a point in time, and then things happen, you know, even between, when I look at this, to, you know, then the July 1st numbers come out, and then you all set the millage rate. So, you know, now we're coming backwards. So the budget process is ever-evolving, based on the needs and based on the revenue sources and the expenditures.
Just, just one more comment, I'm happy to hear the recruitment numbers are up and the vacancy rate is so low. I think it's the lowest I've heard since I've been around talking about it. So that's a positive for you, I know with the manpower allocation that you have to deal with, so I think that in and of itself is going to see, will see a benefit in our community because of that, so thank you for that effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a piece of perspective for those here and those that may be listening With the thought that our county is one of the two worst, if you would, for traffic issues, and to think about our city being a part of that county, and our city is 120 square miles, to add one patrol, the significance of that is like a flea on a camel's back. The amount of area that has to be covered, certainly presence helps control behavior. The more, the more citizens see the patrol cars, the more they tend to pay attention, the more they tend to behave, let's say. And so if there's any way to afford the additional five that was part of the growth plan, based on our population growth, the service area that we need to deal with, certainly the cameras should help, using technology to maybe free up, allow those patrol officers that would normally be in that area to move out a little bit away from that area and the presence that would be there, and the ability to address unlawful, you know, unlawful motor vehicle operators to patrol parking lots where our volunteer crew can, you know, doesn't have the time or the availability. If we can add six instead of five in that, Chief, the sausage-making of the budget, I would absolutely be supportive of adding the additional five that were originally asked for, so to be a total of six, when you think about spreading it out over 120 square miles and three shifts a day and seven days a week, because as you add people, they still have to have days off, can only work one shift at a time, so that's where I would be. If it's at all possible to add more than the one, I would look to add more than the one.
Okay, Councilmember Welch.
Thank you. I definitely agree with the mayor that public safety is one of the number, number-one things that this council has put forward over the past that this council has put forward over the past four years I've been here. So, but I also do agree with the chief that he understands he can fund these positions in different ways and, you know, make the sausage whoever he, he sees fit. So if you're looking for direction, I would, I would support the additional officers if necessary, but I also understand that we have opportunities with the cameras that might be able to fund this later in the year with the budget amendment. So knowing that we have to get to that rate, the not-to-exceed rate that we meant to, I would support the thirteen, but I have understanding that we need to meet a number. So does that give you the direction for what I'm looking for or not?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
What everybody's saying about all that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm for the five additional officers. I'm tired of hearing about children being killed, to be honest with you. We just had a young girl that lost her life like a week ago. And to me, the amount of money that's needed to add them officers, it's, it's a no-brainer. We got to find it. That's my answer.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I support the budget for the police as it's been presented, and I have an open mind about the five officers, but I think it's too soon to make decisions like that in the process. I need more information about funding source, because I'm not clear on that. And I'd like to see some data, too. So, so I'll have an open mind. Thank you.
Chief, how many lane miles we have in the city?
I have a hundred and twenty square miles of jurisdiction, over two hundred and twenty thousand population. I got twelve hundred-plus centerline miles of roadway and a hundred and fifty-eight-plus centerline miles of multi-lane roadways, which are your larger thoroughfares, so quite a bit.
Yeah, and that's just one direction you're talking about, because it's about three thousand, a little over.
Centerline, yeah, it's got to be over three thousand.
Yep, so it's over three thousand.
Right.
And I heard the city manager make a reference with the cameras. I personally see the school zone cameras that we recently approved as an enhancement tool. I would never take into consideration, because we're putting cameras up, we need less police officers. You know how many lane miles those cameras are going to cover?
Not offhand.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
Nineteen lane miles. So I'm not going to make a decision on five additional officers over nineteen lane miles when we have over three thousand lane miles in the city. So I just thought that was important to bring out. Thank you. I don't see any, any other lights on. Thank you, chief, for the presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a long map.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, and members of the council. Matt Williams with Public Works here. Everyone else started off with staffing requests, so I think I will too. We are asking for ten positions this upcoming year. Out of the ten, six of those will constitute one additional pipe crew and one additional swale crew. So as I'm sure you've seen over the last couple of days, water standing in the sides of the roads, in the roads, and some of the complaints that come by, I can assure you that the complaints that cross your desk regarding flooding and drainage for everyone you see, we see dozens that, that don't, that you don't see through the one, not, three-one-one call center. So there's a, a very high need for an additional pipe crew and an additional swale crew. We also have a project manager in the stormwater group, and that's more to serve for our environmental group. Right now, our stormwater project managers are, are taking care of the bubble curtains, Chiquita lock, North Cape Water Quality Projects. This new project manager would be able to relieve our stormwater project managers of, of having to take on those additional duties. That way, those stormwater project managers can work on Trafalgar and Chiquita intersection. Projects that I really want to get going. We, we need to get design going, and we need to get some stuff in the ground out there. I, I can't tell you how many times I've heard that that's been a problem intersection since I've been here every time it rains. So we have a hotspot of, or a heat map of, of the problem drainage locations, and we're going to start knocking those out. And I mean, the, the goal is to start getting those designed and start getting projects kicked off so we can handle some of these drainage problems that we have in the city. Community Service Representative for Property Management, that, uh, they, they will be handling facility maintenance requests. They'll be handling Cartograph. We're, we're switching over to Cartograph as a asset management software. So they will be very involved in making sure that we get any requests that come in from a facility standpoint, making sure that those get logged in and, and sent out to our various crews to make sure that that work's done. I think the previous CSR may have found its way to the city manager's office, and so for, right now, we are without one. So we're, we're looking for a CSR on that group. Solid Waste Inspectors, another word of the day is growth, obviously, as, as the city grows, there's some need for some additional folks out there in the, on the ground to take care of, of our daily duties. Right now, our solid waste group consists of three people, and it's a manager and two inspectors. And what we're asking for is two additional inspectors, so we can break the, the city up into quadrants and, and make sure that we have enough staff out there to handle, well, the hundreds of complaints we have for solid waste, whether it's bins that need replaced, whether it's property damage from, from the trash trucks, liaison between Waste Pro and, and the citizens out there. So there's a, a need for two additional inspectors there. And then Fleet Services, there's a couple of positions there. That division is, it's very vertical. We have sixteen folks working under one supervisor right now. So we have, you know, the, the mechanics and the folks that work in that group all report to one supervisor. So it's a lot of work for one supervisor to, to deal with out there. So we're asking for a, an additional fleet supervisor, an additional fleet coordinator that will help coordinate that work amongst the, the two different groups out there. So that is the extent of the position requests that we have for you. Of course, our department goals have been similar, improved quality maintenance of contractor medians of, medians, and continue to pursue capital re-refurbishments, produce GIS analysis, mapping, applications, databases, et cetera, to benefit the city. This, this stuff is really important, especially as, as you're trying to be transparent with the public, is, is getting these maps out there. So they know that we know where the issues are in the city. They can see it if they go to the website. They can see that stuff on our website via the GIS maps that we, we create. Construct the Hancock, Hancock Bridge Parkway Drainage Project. That's another one of those that I mentioned earlier. One of our project managers is going to kick off next year. And, and we also have a roadway project coming along with that. There's going to be a complete rehab of, of the road over that, that portion of the project there. Phase one of the Stormwater Master Plan, this was something that, that I wanted to get going very early on in my tenure here. Without getting down into the details and the granularity of, of the issues that we see with our stormwater system, it's very hard for us to focus. Right now, we have basin maps that, the, the basins are, are major basins. What we need to do is we need to divide those into sub-basins and get more granular with our analysis of that. That way, we can pinpoint areas where we're having issues, where we don't have enough catch basins in a certain area to serve a, a sub-basin. So that Stormwater Master Plan will help us develop a capital program into the future to make sure that we're also handling these drainage issues that we have. We'll continue working on curbing the, the medians out there with our own curbing machine and contract some of that work out. Sidewalks, the Sun Trail, we, we still have work that we will continue with next year. A median beautification, obviously, it's something that, that the council has a priority of, and, and we're, we're moving forward with that stuff. Standard roadway maintenance or our standard resurfacing of roadways is something that we're going to be continuing on. The Northern City Fleet Facility, it's going in the North Cape, really to expand the services that, that our Fleet Services folks handle out there. We, we just don't have enough bays. If you, if you've been out there, you've, you've seen how many cars we have parked around that building and how few bays we have for folks to work on those vehicles. So fiscal year 2023 accomplishments, completed various sidewalks around the city, completed the designs for landscape and median curbing projects, finished permitting and construction of the North Cape Government Complex, introduced annual waterway science festival, built eleven rain gardens for improved water quality treatment. And for next year, we added the, hopefully adding the ten additional positions. We are moving forward with the multimodal mobility plan as well. That is something that I know is, that this council was very interested in getting kicked off. So we will be starting that as well as the Stormwater Master Plan next year. Design of the fleet and property management buildings, and of course, the new swale and pipe crew is part of those additional positions that we're asking for. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carr?
Just a little feedback, and I know it doesn't affect the general fund expenditure, but the solid waste inspector positions. I've been talking with the city manager a little bit about this, and I was just, I don't, I think we can probably delay or reduce that number down to zero, based on what I believe, talking with him. I think we, I think what's, I think it's staffed great enough now to cover the issues that we have had, and they seem to be accomplishing the tasks that I'll set forward, and if there's a way to reduce the dollars, I think that's a, that's one way we can, we can reduce it, even though it would be from the solid waste assessment, not from the general fund, but just, that's the only position piece that I see that I would try to reduce. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. You said ten a few times, fifteen is in the presentation. Am I missing something?
Uh, it should be ten.
Are we talking about Stormwater Fund?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ten in the Stormwater. We also had, and I'm sorry, we, we, I did get the, the Stormwater Fund, that's the ten, just in the Stormwater Fund. We also. That's right. That's right. Yes, sir. I apologize.
Uh, councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, the solid waste inspectors, I, I think that'll trickle down. I think a lot of that activity was from the storm. People losing their cans and needing them to be replaced and broken cans and things like that. I think we can hold up on that. Thank you.
As far as the solid waste inspectors, could you explain exactly what they're going to do? I know, if I'm not mistaken, we have two now, and, you know, they basically oversee our, our solid waste contract with, with Waste Pro. And I guess we have a, a model that we're trying to achieve where we have inspectors in certain geographical areas. Could you explain a little bit of that?
Yeah, the, the, the plan was developed before Matt was here, so I don't want to leave him trying to respond to it. So three years ago, we had no solid waste manager and, and no dedicated personnel responding to any solid waste issues in the city. The model was failing. We saw it fail numerous times for different events. It became a, a big issue with the community, and as a result of that, we came to council and said we need to operate solid waste differently. At the time, we had a half, basically a half of a manager overseeing solid waste that had no solid waste experience, and we had basically a construction inspector who had no experience in the solid waste field doing inspections. So we brought, we, we, we came up with a plan to get better control over a multimillion-dollar contract that impacts every single resident in the community every single week. And so that was the first hire a manager that was knowledgeable, both in the public and private sector, handling solid waste, that could understand staffing models, routes, operations, timing of pickup, types of pickup, commercial rates. And that was the, when we went out, we were able to find Mr. Schweitzer, who has had that experience and in the industry his entire career. In addition to that, we had a, an inspector that came on board that had experience in the private side on the, basically truck, truck routing and, and service delivery. Our goal was, as discussed at the time, was to get to a situation where we would have one inspector per pickup service area. So we have five, and we are on our stepped path towards getting to having five inspectors in the city so that every collection area has a dedicated inspector to, to one, chase the trucks and make sure that they are doing their job. Two, verify any missed pickups and deal directly with Waste Pro. Three, on the days when it's not pre-collection or post, looking for any illegal setouts or any items that are, are misplaced or shouldn't be out there. And then four, dealing with any complaints with spills or anything. And having a dedicated inspector in each service zone, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, will allow them to basically, right now, we have two, and so we have one in the south and one in the north. The, the service area is just, you know, we're on our way to getting to a point where we can manage each one, but having two for the entire city. The reason I put forward two this year, well, the goal was at the end of three year, three years. So last year was the addition of one, this year is the addition of two, next year would be the last. That would leave us with five inspectors. By the time we head into the next contract in 2027 with a new vendor, they would know there's enough people. We did see, as a result, adding inspectors, a, a change in the response from Waste Pro prior to us having inspectors. Lee County had all the inspectors, and so there was some thought that when there were complaints coming in about service, they went to Lee County first to address the issues because we had no enforcement mechanism. And so as soon as we started adding inspectors, we need, will now see better response times and better service. So that's the reason for me adding those two in there. I, you know, councilmember Carr is correct. He did tell me he thought maybe they weren't wanted. We did have the discussion. That was the reason I have them in there.
Yeah, thank you. I think we need to have some checks and balances to make sure, I mean, that's a pretty, that, that's a contract that touches every resident every week. So I, I think that we have to make sure we have checks and balances in place to make sure that we provide the service and meet the level of expectations of our community. So I, I'll support those, those two positions. One other question I had for you, when we talk about paving the lane miles, I know this year we had to, to utilize some of our reserve funds because a lot of the bids were coming up much higher than we have in the past. As far as lane miles that we're going to pave in FY25 compared to lane miles that we have historically paved each and every year, are we still in part with that?
Yes, yes, we will continue with the, with the same amount of paving next year.
Okay, that's all I have. Uh, councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I wanted to change my decision on, on the, the two individibles. I, I thought it was more of a reactive position, but from what I heard from the city manager, there's a proactive approach as well. So, so I'm for it.
Councilmember Carr?
I understand it can be proactive. I think going beyond that is if they're capable, and I think, based on what I understand, they are going to have code enforcement authority, if not already, moving forward, that they could handle the code cases associated with any violations of the bulk trash or any other violation they may find.
I don't know if it's been worked out yet, but I know that Terry was working with Todd to see if, about getting them deputized so that they could enforce some traffic, or, traffic, some, uh,
Code Enforcement.
Items.
I think, I mean, we had done that in the past when I was here, and I think it can be done by ordinance. It's, and then the training obviously would be needed to get them up to speed. But if we could get to the level of service that they're actually doing code cases associated with the trash violations, I think then it's productive, more productive than it is now by just, like you said, chasing trucks around, which I think is important. But I mean, unlike the lot mowing program that has no, no one monitoring the service, like the customer, if, if there's a. if, if there's a customer issue with a trash, lack of pickup or can broke down, they're going to call somebody. Where lot mowing requires a little bit more review, you know, for the contract obligations because no one's going to call in if their vacant lot doesn't get mowed because they probably don't know that, especially if they're out of state. But if we can get to the point, Mike, that we can utilize them as code officers and handle all trash related issues, I could support the two additional without hesitation, but I hadn't heard that commitment, so.
So I think at, at a point where we would have one in each dedicated zone, we can get there. I don't know if there's time right now with the amount of service related issues with the vendor, that there's enough time to, to handle code. But when we get to the full build out model, that, that is the, the goal. But principally, these are, these are inspectors of the service provider, not code inspectors or code officers of the residents. So, but at some point, it could, depending on how, how it plays out with the five, they could do both. But right now, they're, they're sold, just like when we have an inspectors for the UEP or an inspector for paving project or, this is a service provider inspector verifying the work of the, of the provider to the contract that they've agreed to. We all know that everybody, service providers and contractors looking for ways to shave and cut costs and make a profit. And so the idea of, of these not being, you know, there was a thought in the very beginning to be code officers, but the intent was not to focus on the residents because we have code doing that. These are basically focused on the service provider and making sure they're doing, the, the residents don't know what the contract says. So these people are focused on the contract and the service provided by Waste Pro.
But the, the proactive example you described was code related, not service related, wasn't it? That's why I'm confused now.
Yeah, so the, I was laying out, the mayor had asked me, are we staffing towards a plan? And the plan is to get to have one in each day so that we have an inspector for each zone, not like a north and a south or an east and west. And then the idea would be throughout those five days, there are going to be days they're looking at setouts, there'd be days they're going to be looking at the contractor and missed pickups. The following day is did they get to all the thing, the routes they didn't get to finish? And then there will be extra days to go through their same collection area and find those proactive, but we can't get to those proactive measures if we don't fully fund the plan that we're trying to get to.
But that's four total and that's, this two would bring you to the four total, no?
Yes, this is the second year of adding the additional four from the one.
So the four gets you to where you just described.
There's one more next year gets us one in each day.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, aside from this, I have a quick question for the city manager. Seeing we only have one topic left in the presentation and I only had, I have an obligation to be somewhere at six o'clock. Are we trying to power through this whole thing today or are we still looking to schedule a meeting for next week? Because I know that one's as if needed. So if we complete the next one, are, are we going to still have a meeting next week or is this going to finish it all? Okay. Well, in that case then, I'd like to ask to, because of a prior, I didn't, you know, I had this scheduled to five o'clock today, not till six, and I have a prior obligation at six. I'd like to let you guys know that I'm going to be probably packing up here in about 10 minutes and pick this up again next week. Anything I miss, I'll, I'll watch this later and I'll, I'll talk with Mike on my one-on-one on Monday. Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works? All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. The Utilities Department budget consists of 91.5% in the Water and Sewer Fund, 8.4% of the budget is for the North 1, 2, and 3 UEP, 0.1 is potable water CAC and CFEC funds for a total decrease of 32% compared to the fiscal year 2024 budget. Some of that decrease is attributed to, in 2024, we funded the North 1 East and the North 3 design. So that's one of the reasons why that's a little higher last year. The Utilities Asset Management Plan for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2030 will allow the Utilities Department to work on a number of capital improvement projects. These projects include but are not limited to, sorry. We will begin construction of the new biosolids conveyor replacement at the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility. Will be completing the North RO perimeter wall and landscaping. That's actually in procurement right now. We will be completing the South RO refurbishments of the bulk chemical containment pits, pipes, ports, gratings, and production flooring. Will be installing advanced HAWK, that's the name of a, a product line. Water quality monitoring instrumentation for the Everest Water Rec Facility. Will begin design of the North Water Reclamation Facility that will be expandable to 17 or 18 million gallons per day of capacity and will provide additional reclaimed water to our customers. Will also be beginning design of the North RO Water Treatment Facility expansion that is designed to increase the facility's current capacity up to 18 million gallons a day. That's up from the current 12 million gallons a day that we're permitted to support now. Will also begin construction of the pipeline and pump station for the Northeast Reservoir in Charlotte County. The project will provide additional irrigation water during the dry season as it's done in years past, but we've had to pump it into the swells, which, once we put in this pipeline and pump station, we'll take FDOT out of the equation because we always have to go to them and, and get a lot of permits. So once we put that in, we can actually pump without having them in the equation. We're at 100% design on that project and I believe we're still moving forward with negotiating a real estate contract with the owner of that site. Once that's complete, we'll be able to get the FDOT right of way permit and construct that pipeline and pump station. Will also begin design and permitting of the first phase of the neighborhood water main replacement project. The first phase project boundaries are Demeo Canal, Veterans Parkway, Santa Barbara, and San Carlos Canal. That's an area off of Santa Barbara that when the water was put in, it was put in with improper bedding. So we're going to have to go back and put in proper bedding and replace the water mains. Will also begin design and permitting of a new wastewater headwork structure at the Everest Wastewater Facility. Will begin design of expansion of the city's north-south water transfer station. This station allows us to transfer canal water under Pine Island Road from the canal basins north of Pine Island to the basin south of Pine Island Road and also be able to transfer that water from the Northeast Reservoir each time that we begin pumping from that reservoir. Will also begin design of utilities for the Pine Island Road Commercial Corridor between Burnt Store and Chiquita. That's actually underway as we speak. And also, I'd like to say that during fiscal year 2024, we completed a number of projects. They include the Kaluissachi Connect Project. We completed rehabilitation of four wastewater lift stations and 20 sewer manholes. In-house staff at both RO plants cleaned the membrane elements. This reduces our electricity costs and we completed construction of the new Southwest Water Reclamation Facility Operations Building, which we will be scheduling a ribbon cutting and tour, tentatively scheduled for September 6th. We completed the wastewater force main extension that will serve the CRA area and allow for continued growth and redevelopment in the CRA district. And also underway is the Master Pump Station 100 that is currently under construction and will be completed early next year. We also will be adding 12 additional positions to help us keep up with growth. Those positions include two senior utility techs. These positions are needed to operate a new vac, vacuum sewer truck and handle the increase in workload that the UEPs bring and the continued growth. Also, the city's UE, I'd like to say that city's UEP, each time we go into a UEP area, we get about 4,000 to 4,500 customers each time within six months. So each time that area, once it's completed, we send out the notices, the certified letters within a very short relatively period of time, we all of a sudden have all those customers that are currently on well and septic, which equates to about a 5% increase in infrastructure that my staff have to take care of. So since UEP 6 and 7, we've completed North 2, which is a very large area and we're, and we have North 1 underway. That's going to represent probably between a 15 and 20% increase in lift stations and all the associated infrastructure that goes with it. I did look at, we're, as Mark mentioned earlier, we have a level of service study underway to, that's going to give us a better idea out in the out years as we complete these UEP areas, what does that staffing look like in the future years? So preliminarily, we looked at the AWWA benchmarking, 25th percentile, which is the conservative metric. And right now, we're about 10 or 12 positions short for this year. So the 12 positions that I'm asking for are consistent with the AWWA benchmarking and that looks at, that's, you know, pretty much utilities nationwide that are surveyed based on what their staffing levels are and other metrics. So the positions that I'm asking for are needed. I could go on on any specific position if you have a question that you would like to know what the justification is for. I have that information. I won't go through all of them and that's all I have and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Utilities Department presentation? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, so back, last up, the, right now, the, we're proposing to come back with some solutions associated with the millage rate reduction as well as the additional revenue that we received, netted against any adjustments associated with, with personnel. And, and, and we'll come back with that on the, for the workshop next Tuesday. And that should hopefully wrap things up and we could finish putting the final touches on the proposed budget for introduction in September. So, and just because we're doing this workshop today, I just want to remind everybody that our first public hearing for the tentative millage rates in the proposed budget will be on September 12th, 2024 in the council chambers at 5:05 PM.
Will you be bringing us back two scenarios? One, the millage rate that we adopted did not exceed and one the rollback rate because I know in our last discussion, I know some council members had a desire to take a look at the rollback rate. So can you bring us back two scenarios so we can see what those scenarios look like and see if any of those council members, I know councilmember Long's not here, councilmember Welsh, I know he's already left, but, so we have two scenarios to take a look at.
Is that the will of council?
Yeah. So what everybody wants is.
All right. Would you want to stay with the adoptive rate only? All right. How about councilmember Stanky? Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, it's the problem.
I mean, I would have liked to have seen it anyway if this-
Yeah, I would have liked to see it too.
I don't see, I don't see any harm in looking at it.
Unfortunately, we got-
We don't have, yeah.
We either got councilmembers that don't come or some that don't have a full-time responsibility, so.
Are we talking about an entire budget or just?
No, if we were going to make cuts.
Where would they be?
Where would they be?
That's a lot of work to do.
We got three point, about 3.1 million at the halfback rate that we have to find for the, out of the general fund. If it's the rollback rate, it's about 6.2, 6.3 if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So I think that should be easy to at least recognize, not saying that that's the direction we're going to go, but when we had a majority of us here before that, I knew some, some individuals at least wanted to look at that.
So is the idea that, all right, where would the other 3 million come from?
Yeah, where, where would it be? So in other words, if we want to go to the rollback rate, you got to find the additional $3 million. What does that look like? Where, where would you cut?
May I? Shouldn't we be the ones to make that decision though? Why would we put that on the city manager when we're the ones deciding on the final budget? I feel like if we're cutting, if we're going to cut his recommendations, we should be the ones to say, this is what you need to cut.
As long as I've been here, the city manager, no matter who it was, whether it was John Zurlag, Robert Hernandez, or this city manager, made a recommendation where those cuts would be.
Okay. That is not how I remember it every year, but it's irrelevant because I don't think we're going to have them do it, right? There was four of us that said no to the rollback rate or is that where we landed?
Yeah, that's fine, but when we have all eight of us here, we could start this scenario over again. So that's the direction that we want to go in. I'm okay with that too.
Okay.
I can re, I can call them and ask them. If I, after, I see what today is, I will find out from Long and Welsh and Hayden what, what their thoughts are. If it is, I will produce it. You will have my commitment. If I determine that outside of this meeting, you will have it. If not, you'll know why.
Hopefully we'll have eight councilmembers that'll show up.
Well, I'm going, I'm going to talk to all eight of them. So if, if the consensus is to bring it, I will bring it. If it's not, you'll know why.
All right.
I, I don't want you to think I'm going to delay it. I need to know it so I can go back and figure it out. So even though they're not here to tell me right now, I will find out.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, not to belabor, I've got one question if I could just ask you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It's on page 19, Mark. You've got a chart about FTEs per 1,000 residents. Does that include, does that across all funds, all, all staff or is that just general fund staff?
All funds, all staff.
Thank you. That's, thank you, man. That's all I had.
Okay. Is that all you have, Mr. Mason?
It's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. City Manager, is that all you have before we move on to citizens input?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Item five is citizens inputs, maximum 60 minutes. Set for the input of citizens, all matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Come to the podium to my left, your right. Anyone who wishes to speak.
Good afternoon. Tom Shadrack. Am I on? Okay. Just a couple of questions. Thanks for the review today. One thing I saw in the budget that's missing is the fund balance pages that were in the prior year. I know I have to go all the way back to the CFR to see where the fund balances are. Could we get a presentation or add for next week where we sand on the reserves? With all the hurricane funds being used and being stated that they're put back now, we'd kind of like to see, where's our fund balances? And last year they were in there, this year they're gone. My other comment, page 10, you know, you show at 11% growth in taxable income, we've had it for the last three years and we're only using 5 or 6% in- it for the last three years. And we're only using 5 or 6% in the out-years. I mean, that's very conservative. If you can find cuts to get to the rollback rate this year by using one-time money, all you got to do is kind of up that rate for the out-years, and you'll balance in the future years. You're just using too, not enough taxable money. We know, we're already seven months into this year. We know inflation rate's still 3%. You know, our property values aren't going to decrease. We're going to see another big increase as they start adding the E and corrections back again. So, I think it's going to be another 10%, double-digit taxable increase. So, all you got to do is up that a little bit. You'll balance the out-years. If you find the money, one-time money, you'll be able to cut the budget this year. I know the mayor mentioned there's a huge amount of staffing shortages this year that's going to produce a lot of surplus. So, use it and cut to the rollback rate and just up the taxable values in the out-years. You'll balance. Just another comment, my, a neighbor's put his house up for sale in my neighborhood. He's a, he's a snowbird. He's not there that much. He's got a kind of a nice, expensive home. But the reason he's leaving is property taxes have gone up 40% in five years. That's catching up with us. We got to cut some costs, keep our recurring costs down, watch our manpower, because that's, that's a 25-year commitment when you add people. One-time stuff, good to use. Keep the reserves up there, because there is a rainy day coming. Okay, thank you.
Any other individual would like to speak toward citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input's now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none. Time, place of a regular, future meetings. We have a regular meeting in Cape Coral. City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, August 7, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meaning adjourned.